Associations or traveling teams or something like that in the area that they can join or try out for or something like that. What about baseball and things like that? Are those same things?
It's three o'clock, so it will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So go ahead and do a roll call. So in attendance, we have Bob, Ed, myself, Carol, and Doug. And Tony's also in, and then we will go ahead and start with items for the, yeah, and Tony's, right? Items for discussion, discussion and the capital improvement plan. So do you want us to go through it? You want to present it and get our feedback? How do you prefer to do this one?
So I'll just kind of give you a little bit of history and how this came about. Laura's the spreadsheet person. I am not, but I made an attempt at this. So what we did was staff went through and any singular item that is $2,500 in value or more is on this list. If it is $24,990, $24.99, it is on operation and maintenance side. So we've identified existing furniture fixtures and equipment, buildings, et cetera. I put it on this list and then we've also put on here. Kind of like a wish list of things for in the future. Perfect example is Motorola radios. And that would be for if we lost communication for cell phones during a storm. We, we could get these radios and we would still be able to communicate. So the items in blue. If it's highlighted in blue, that is the anticipated year of replacement or purchase. If I did not have a number of an existing fixture. Such as the guard houses or the gate houses at Stony Brook or at Pelican. I went to the capital reserve study and found what they projected in there. So we've, we've taken an estimated replacement cost of these items and divided that by what we expect the life, the life expectancy to be to budget that over the life expectancy and to budget for that amount.
What's the difference between this and the capital reserve plan then? I, I would think they'd be one in the same.
It's, it's pretty much one in the same. So what we've done is we've come, we've combined both. So this has, this has on here.
But you, but then these numbers are the projections of needed funds to do that. For example, I'm looking at first one. Information technology, we need to spend in 2030, $10,000, but we need to do that every year.
Yes.
What is the year that we have the expenditure or is the expenditure $10,000?
Annually.
It is annually. Okay. Okay. So then if there's something like road improvement. We'll see road resurfacing maybe in year 2031 as a lump sum price. Of an expenditure in that year, not a number leading up to it.
These are, these are leading up to.
So, so we're setting aside money such that?
Yes. Or, or if you, that, that is the method that I, I took. If you want to just wait and then have the expenditure, like let's take this John Deere tractor right here. So in 2025, it's estimated replacement cost is 17,000. If you just want to plug in 17,000 that year and not budget up into that point, we can do it that way either.
Well, see, that's, that was the whole, the, the capital reserve plan takes the cost and shows the expense. But at the bottom of the cash flow, it determines the amount of money that it's going to take to meet each one of those expenditures.
We've, we've essentially done, done that here.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's what I was a customer of the capital reserves today. And one of my question was is how are we two issues? How are we going to want to do it? Which I would recommend the, the latter, having it with a cash flow. Such that at the end of the period, we have the money to do it. And then the second one is, are we going to go categorically by the book? That 100% of the money is going to be done and we budget for it. Because if we don't, that's what my community does. I don't know any other way you do it unless we make a commitment and a statement that if we do it anything less, take for example, 50%. We're only going to fund it 50%. What do we do when we get to year 2030 and you've got 50% of the money? But where's the money coming from? We go to, we committing right now to commit the board 2030 that they're going to have a special assessment? I don't think legally we can do that.
Can't bind future boards.
You can't bind them. So we're, what we're doing is no, you, no, you can, no, 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 Bob, can't do that. If you're truly doing a, a capital reserve study, your study says you need to do it in that year. Otherwise you go, you go back, but you go back and then you redo the study. I mean, you gotta, you're wasting.
Okay, there's a cost for bleachers.
Yeah.
We don't want to put a thousand dollars a year away from bleachers. That doesn't mean that in 2026, we're not going to buy bleachers. Just may get some other funding source.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to get down to is, is that what is the basis of doing this? I know in our community, we do it 100%. We get the cost. The only thing that's a variable. Is the year in which it's going to be incurred. Some of those things could be plus or minus a year, two years. You, you, you can always take a road and say, I'm going to make it one more year. If instead of having 10 potholes, it has 12, that type of deal. But at least you're generating the money to do it. The surprise comes is what the bid is. And what the cost is.
Of the 780, that's for the year 20, 780. How much did we pay? How much did we put aside for that?
I don't know off the top of my head. I would have to look. I don't think we put any of this stuff aside because these.
What I'm suggesting is that if we want to do this in line with a theory, I'll call it better. And all of a sudden now we're going to be shocking the community that you're going to pony up three quarters of a million dollars for reserves.
Actually, let me rephrase that. I can tell you that my IT budget was in there, but the rest of it, I don't think we did.
We want to, in this environment and today, what we're doing already with.
It never changes, Bob. It's, it's been that away for, since the beginning of time. It's always in this environment. But the issue is, is that, and I have no problem of doing this, kicking the can down the road. I just want to make sure that anybody coming on knows they're going to receive the can in two years, three years, five years.
Just like we deferred all the expenses for bond bank. A replacement and replenishment. And then we got a $26 million loan from the, you know, stake revolving button. I understand how it works. I'm with you. But on the other part, I'm not going to sit here and say that we need to fund this thing fully. And, and all of a sudden give a shock to everybody of $780,000 in one year. And it's going to be there for us. What's it to next year?
Well, see, see, this is, this is the problem. This truly, this isn't a capital reserve here in this format. Because it's not taking the funds that we have on hand and starting with that. And then adding in a fixed amount over a period of time such that you never go in the red. So it's not a true.
But the cap reserve study, right? And even that has a significant increase.
Yeah, but I mean, you've got, you've got to start with, if you've got, you guys got, we've got an apples and oranges here. Pelican Reserve is setting with cash in the bank that can float some of the things that Pelican Reserve might have. On the other hand, we here don't have that cash. And so we've got to generate it to be able to make this thing work.
But when, when Pelican started their reserve fund. We had a cap study that wanted X dollar. There's no way now we're going to put that on the front of this. So we came up with an arbitrary number and started putting it in.
And I think that's where I'm at right now is, do we, do we, do we have an understanding of what, what is the number? Can you go back up to the bottom of this one, Laura? So this one is saying here, these are truly expenditures, correct? Their amounts projected to be spent in that year or the general fund. Is that correct?
What's the clue?
The blue, the blue is the year of replacement. So like take for instance, the bocce courts, bocce ball courts. The estimated replacement cost is 28,000. So we're going to build that 28,000 because we incur. Yeah. Incur it over, over, because we expect to have a what 10 year life left on, on the bocce courts. So we're going to save 20 and that money's going to roll year over year.
And just go into checking account till we're finished.
Yes.
And as an example, the zero term mower, that's an expenditure in 2024, 1,000, we're going to budget 1,300 the next.
The next time we need to do it.
Yes.
Say it's not a true, that's, that's just not the way to do it.
To answer your question for fiscal 23 and for fiscal 22, we put the same amount in. We did $279,000 into the capital reserve.
The 279 prepares with 780. So we underfunded by 500,000.
So.
Well, not, not, not necessarily. You've got to go back as to what the cash on hand was. If we're sitting here with $3 million in the bank to start out with. You're going to draw down on that. It's going to change the amount of money you do each month. That's, that's the way you do these. This isn't. You, you've got to take and know, and you decide what is the year the expenditure is going to be made. Then you work backwards with what you start with and then you allocate it. That may come up with a number that'll choke a horse and you'll just say, hey, I, I can go half of that. And then you see what that does. But then the person that's out there in the field will look and say, we're in for an assessment in years 30, 31, 32, 33, and they're going to knock, it's going to knock their socks off.
Here's the people that place. I'm not going to.
So they walk in here and get a cakewalk.
That's part of it. That's right. It's part of it. My thing is, is that I can't make a decision. I'm looking at a number that I want to be able to look in the general fund for 2024. I don't even want to look out past that right now because we're talking about the 2024 budget. But what is the number we need to put in right now for next year's budget for capital reserve? That along with the amount of money that we have cash on hand. Plus maybe looking three or four years out at a certain level of funding will keep us above water. That's what I'm looking for. And that would be the number I want to.
I have some questions too.
Okay. If you go all the way back up to the top of this, Laura, please. Okay. So we're looking at this. Okay. I understand how you've done it. I understand the notes. I understand the total column and the 10 years. Okay. But if I'm just looking at budgeting for next year. Am I only looking really at 2024 and 2025?
For next year, you'd be looking at 2024.
Correct.
2023, 24.
Nope.
It's 24.
You'd use the first column, the fiscal 2024. That's the budget that we're talking.
But that starts October 1st of 23 is all I'm trying to say.
Yeah, but it's fiscal 24.
Okay.
It goes based on the year that the period ends, not when it starts.
Gotcha.
Okay. So what would the total be if we just took the blue items? Because you said those are the ones that we're going to replace next year.
An expenditure.
That's, that's an expenditure that we have to budget for, right?
Yes, ma'am. Laura can add that up real quick.
Only we're going to spend it, but you're right. So, so, so the, the blues are purely anticipated expenses in 2024.
Yes.
Correct.
And the total of the blues is? It's, it's not even on there, is it?
It's $331,600.
What's 350, oh, 350.
Okay, 3.
Say 331.
331, 600. And that includes my 10,000 in technology, which I have in the budget already anyway. So.
Just so we're clear, this is non-bond items.
Right.
Correct.
Of the general fund only.
The bond, the bond items will be showing up as a principal and interest payment for 2024 for that particular category. So Laura.
Okay. So, well, wait a minute.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay. So if I go down to the total of 780, 745. 331,000 of that is what you're saying needs to be spent next year.
That's our planned purchases for fiscal 24. Yes.
What's?
Requested.
Yes.
Purchases.
Okay. And if, could I ask you to do also fiscal year 2025? What's the total of just the blues?
If I don't lose it. Not that much. Actually, it would be, sorry, plus the 10,000.
Okay. So that's only.
And then just do this real quick. And you just take the, the 331, 600, that's, that's anticipated expenditure or target. You just take the difference between 3, 331, yes, and just give me the difference. That's the, that's the reserve.
440,000.
So what this brings, what this puts in front of us is, as you were saying before, you had to kick in the can down the road. We're kicking, if we just accepted this and only did the blue and didn't fund the other things to the proportion that we should for the next 10 years or whatever. And we've deferred close to a half million dollars of, of future expenses.
Just for one year.
And that's one, one year. That's right. That's right.
And it, it just.
I, I'm sorry, Laura, did you get a total for the 2025?
Right here.
The blues?
17,000, 17,000.
Do 26 and 27. So we have a four year. Just know what we're looking at.
Well, I can't just drag it over. It's individual. So hang on.
Because the cells don't lie. They move all over the place.
So could I ask you then to go back to the blues in 24 and 25? And tell me if there's anything that's in 24 that could be done in 25?
To balance it a little better.
Yes. In other words, if I look at these two, it's about 350. 350,000. If we basically said we can do 200,000 in 24 and we'll do 100,000 in 25. How would you adjust that?
That's kind of the way we've always operated. I, I hear exactly what you're saying. What, get it with?
Well, I'm trying to get more of an even amount rather than this 331,000 to 17,000.
But what happens when we do that? And I'm not opposed to doing.
Well, no, then you've got to consider a figure for reserves too.
Well, that, that's what this is all for.
That's what this is.
I understand, but there's a big difference of going from, if you go down to the totals. The total in 24 is 780,745. The total in 25 is 473, 495. The difference in 24 is about 500,000. The difference in 25 is
Significant.
450,000.
Looking at this, hold on one second. So in 2023, we spent, what was our?
Microphone.
So it seems like you're basically putting from this chart, you want to put aside a half a million dollars a year for all the things that will happen in future years, but aren't going to happen either in 24 or 25.
That's right. You are.
Half a million dollars a year.
You're setting aside money. The, the thing you've got to keep in mind when you're doing these is you've got to be as accurate as possible as to when the need is going to happen. It's going to be variable to begin with, but you need to be accurate as you can be. Because then you've got to take cash you have on hand and then generate money to either meet that or understanding that you're going to maybe have a supplemental assessment that makes up the difference if you don't meet it, one or the other, one or the other.
Or, or add.
This, this way here, the problem is, is you're not seeing the expenditures. That's why you want to go back to the way the guy that did it on the capital reserve. You want to see every year what is anticipated to be spent. Then let the chips fall where, no, 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 this isn't what, that's not what this is. This is allocating money to create at a period of time when you're going to spend it. That's where, go back to that Toro ground master. You're not going to spend a thousand dollars each year on a Toro grand master. What you're going to do is you're going to spend a thousand dollars and generate 11,000 to spend it when you need it. We don't have when you need it on this page. That's the problem. We needed to have this.
Toro ground master is in blue. That would mean that it gets purchased in 24.
The first one.
But then you continue to accrue for the next.
For the next time.
And then you're.
Well, hold on, hold, no, 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 no. How much does a Toro ground master cost?
That's a lease to own purchase price based off the state contract.
But let's, let's make it simple. What is a ground master cost?
Over on the side, it says 40,000.
40,000.
The notes is.
So you ain't going to buy it for a thousand dollars and buy it then.
No.
Okay. That's not an expenditure then. That's my point. This needs to be an expenditure.
But it's a lease, Ed.
I know. That's why I said that's, that's a bad example of doing one on the lease.
Okay.
Go to the mower. Go to the zero term mower.
Do what?
What I was looking at is approximately how much do we have to put aside in reserves? That you're not going to spend in 24 or 25, but that you're going to need to start building up. If you want to have three, four million, whatever it is in your account in the next five or six years. And what you're actually going to spend. And then between 24 and 25, I'm trying to figure out a way that we can even those two numbers. So that it's not a big hit in 24, much smaller hit in 25.
So I'll have Doug going in and out.
So can you just, do you guys remember what are, what was the equivalent for 2023? Do you guys know about what that equivalent to the?
770.
No, no, no. The, the expenditure. Expenditure for 2023.
The other way. What is our, what's our projected expenditure for capital improvement in 2023 year in projected? What's it going to be?
I'm going to say it's, it's difficult because we had the loan, which covered some of the capital expenditures last year that turned into the bond this year.
Okay, those would be.
My, my point of that is to Carol's point, she's saying that that 331 seems like a big number. But we can't truly say that unless we also have the previous couple of years to see if that's, you know, is that a big number or? Is it not? But there's two ways. I think what you're looking at is for 2024, that's, that's, that's a very large number. When you look at the rest of the following three or four years, it drops significantly. So there's, we could just set the number and just say, look, we're, we have to start somewhere. Or we could wait that amount. So for the first year, we could wait the, the revenue withholding at a smaller percentage. And then right side that as it goes forward for the next, you know, couple of years, we want to balance.
Ramp it up.
Yeah, we could ramp it up and then level it off. So, you know, you basically would go, you wouldn't do 100% of allocation for year one. You would do it at 50% and then tack the other 50% on to, to the others if, if you wanted to balance it out a little bit.
Well, if you were to look at the budget, which doesn't really answer your question because to Chelsea's point, we had the loan and then we rolled it into the bonds. The 300 account, which is the general fund capital expense account. Our budget for last year was 2.977 million dollars, but we didn't, that was not included in the assessments. We set aside $279,000 in reserves for that account for last year. So it's, it's not really a fair comparison. 279,000 went into reserves for the general fund for last year. But our budget was 2.977 million. But again, that was funded to the bank loan and the bonds. And so it's, that was not a SaaS.
Just go to our capital reserve study. The way we paid to have done. He shows in FY '23 that we had 3.6 billion. We put in 279 contribution. Estimated interest earnings was 43,000. We anticipated year end expenses. God only knows what that was calculated, but it was 963,000. And we have a surplus at the end or a balance at the end of 3 million. Next year, he's showing, raising it up from 279 to 1.2 million, 31,000 in interest, 2.3 million in expenditures. So there's your expenditures. They vary all over the place, going up and down. You can take and oscillate those any way you want to make this come back and fit your, your mold. But the bottom line is, is that there, your critical line is that green line. He's suggesting and a differing number every year, 1.2 to 1.242, 1.285, drop it down to 450. A lot of capital reserve guys will tell you, don't do it that way. Straight line it. Straight line it. So you're not shocking people and then the next year you, you have nothing. They'll ask you, you know what the hell you're doing? Straight line it.
So I think there's a balance too. So whatever the, you know, let's say if our average total is, what is that? We, and it looks like probably around 300.
356.
356. That's like our watermark. That's where we want. Cause some, some years we might have a little bit more expenditure. So we need to back off the reserves. Some years we'll have less so we can increase the reserve. That's what I'm trying to look at, which I think is what you're trying to get to. How do we balance? How do we operate more of in a balanced environment? So we can say what our fixed assessments are going to be for the next X amount of years. So we don't have big years.
And if last year was a baseline arbitrarily, say 279, that's what we put aside for reserve. And if we're trying to get to 350 as a number.
Yeah.
The difference is hundred, hundred and some thousand dollars. It's not that great a number. It's not the scary number we're looking at. However, then we're not putting aside money for the bocce ball courts in 24. You know, we got the expense coming sometime in the future. But we're, we're not doing it by individual item by this year.
But what I don't understand, Bob, is it's what this, we just did this here. We got, this, this is what's got me really confused about this. 2025 on this show, 17,000 to be spent.
Oh, blue items.
Blue items, blue items. Yeah. Things to be spent.
Yep.
This one's showing 1.9 million. What the hell is going on?
Is bond? Does that go into?
This is a reserve.
So I, 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 how do I say this? Staff looked at the life of existing stuff of what we know that we have. He has a methodology, I'm, I'm assuming for his capital reserve and when, when he anticipates us doing some of these projects.
Okay. So then let me ask you right on that point. So let's go to the Motorola radios. So 2024, $58,000, right? So that is a full replacement. So when you, we're looking at that total column at the end. It is not the total replacement of the item.
No.
It is total replacements plus reserve money.
Budgeted.
Right?
So that we projected.
Let me just go. So 58,000. But then if I go and I add the four grand for the 10 years, it's 40,000. So it's less, so it's going to cost me less to replace it 10 years down the road?
It exceeds the, this 10 year time span. So it's.
Okay. So it's not showing. Okay.
Cause this is only 10 years worth.
It's not showing.
So then it's not, so that, so that's what concerns me. Like, like that is one example.
That could be a 15 year item.
Yes. Yeah. And we can put, we can put that information on there. That's what you guys like.
That's.
That's what I would like to see the whole thing. Cause, because then if you go, you're like, well, it costs you 58 grand in 2024. And then you, you know, when you get to, when is the next time, which will be in 10 years, well, not in 10 years, it'll be, you know, however long it takes you 15 years. Yes. So I think you, how long it takes to get to that.
You show me a piece of technology that's going to last 15 years.
Yeah. Well, in, in essence, in essence, we're just throwing to the wind the capital reserve study.
Yeah. So.
It's, it just doesn't make sense. My deal is if we don't like some of the way he prognosticated what was going to be spent. We change it. But this one here is based upon the way you do it. You show the expenses as a year you think it's going to be. Nothing says it's in stone. You can go back and manipulate this, but the bottom line is, is it tells you what you need. You, nobody's holding a gun to your head unless you're in a condominium association, in which case you have to by law have that money there. We got some flexibility. Alls I'm saying is if we're going to do the flexibility, which I can go along with. Just make sure the public knows that if we take this from 279 to 300 or 500 or 600,000. And it's not what he is suggesting. Make sure the owners know it's going to be coming out of your billfold.
And if we do this correctly, then we shouldn't have a whole lot of rigor when it comes to budget time. Cause it should, all we're doing is validating. And is there any additional something that's come up that wasn't planned?
Inflation.
So we should be able to project what our assessments are going to be for the next five to 10 years. I mean.
And, and that's all you can accurately do it anyway.
I mean, five years. Yeah, five, even three to five. But you know what I mean? Like, it makes the, this is the right, this is the way we should be doing it. So we're, this is directionally correct. How we get there, we might need to find a little bit.
This is the exact CIP that I did when I was at the beach. And so the, the pros and cons. Correct in that, you know, you may be putting money in the pot now for, in the future that you may not see a direct benefit from. Because the replacement isn't for another 10 years and I, I might not be here in 10 years. But what this also does is provides you a failsafe to where if something unexpected comes up. Like if the pavilion, tornado comes through and the pavilion's gone. We have a pot of money that we can reprioritize the projects to replace that pavilion. Yeah.
And isn't that the fundamental principle guide our 300 or our 3 million dollars reserve right now? That are pots, so to speak.
But I don't think.
That was pot luck is what that was.
I don't believe that it has been, that pot has just been sitting there, but it has not been identified to this step. I don't believe that it has been, that pot has just been sitting there, but it has not been identified to this step. So these are, like I said, existing assets that we know we have and/or future proposed things that we would like. The Motorola radios, I think we learned that last year with Hurricane Ian. Those would be something nice to have. Do we absolutely need them? No, we could probably rent them. But operationally in the long term, it makes sense to have these radios because we're a utility. We're first, you know, first responders here for clearing roadways, things like that.
Is there any way of taking that money and putting out over two years? Instead of buying fifty-eight thousand worth of stuff?
We could buy some.
You could buy half this year and half next year.
How many were?
And we would.
Ten.
And so we used during the hurricane.
And these would.
So they're, they're, they're expensive.
They are. They, they would connect to the counties, to the county's system. Um, which is again what I did at the beach. And then um their main, main antenna is there at the E O C. Um, and then they would help us program the radios to where it on all of the right channels. But these do have fifteen-year life.
Ten, I don't think we, right.
Okay, so um can, can you guys go back through the list then? And give us a suggestion as to between twenty-four and twenty-five? What you feel the district absolutely has to spend in replacement next year? And um, and what we might be able to do over two years?
To level some of the three hundred thirty-one thousand into fiscal year twenty-five.
So you're saying a call out like needs versus wants and then what we're gonna set aside for reserves is basically kind of like classified into three parts?
Well, and I think what we need to do then is look at the total amount that the difference with whatever you come up with with twenty-four and twenty-five. What we would need, what the totals are then, and the amount that goes into reserves for the other years. And start looking to even that out. But you've got to get your expenditures down first in twenty-four and twenty-five. Before you can look at what you could put into reserves.
Understood. If the board wanted to take the average of the ten years and leave it at that three fifty number, we will prioritize with that, based on that number. If, if the number's two seventy-nine, we'll, we'll work with that number. We can reprioritize some of these items if, if, if needed.
And, and what is the, so following averages, like the pool furniture, fixture, equipment, we, we just did that.
Go to paving pools.
Something different?
So that means we're gonna only collect that and set it aside if it, the twenty twenty-four fifty thousand dollars.
So that, that was for the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. They had some ideas that they wanted to do at the pool, so we set money aside. If you don't want to set money aside, we can not do it.
That's fine, but hold on it. I, I, I don't recall pool furniture. I, I recall uh they wanted a structure which is down below, so you, 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 you're listing.
It's in the right spot.
Yeah.
They also wanted umbrellas for the tables.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I don't.
So they didn't, so they didn't have a price. So, so that's what concerns me because then I will go with that. Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll say that pool furniture and fixtures and equipment will be umbrellas, right?
To, to me, that would be the splash pad item. But you don't want, I mean, you, if you want to call it a splash pad, we can call it.
Then we should call what it is, so then we know, because then you look at pool shade structure, thirty thousand dollars. But then the same size, the same size.
Are you classifying as a fixture? Okay.
Okay.
Facility improvement.
Keep in mind, these have to be individual totals. Because this is based on a metho- methodology that what is paid for by the residents on Parks and Rec is totally different than what is paid for on
They're, they're categorized.
Water management. So you, you can't take these to three thirty-one. You've got to take each individual section and apply it. Otherwise, it's, it's worthless. It's not, it doesn't fit our methodology.
There should be a series of line items that correspond with that, with that total.
And so then, so then.
That's right. So if you go to the general fund, general fund has four components, which is the administrative, parks and rec and the water management and what streets and roads, whatever. Each one of these amounts for capital has to go into that account. So you got, you can't just sit there and juggle them. If you uh have it all as park and rec, it gets assigned to park and rec. Stormwater management doesn't pick up any tab of it. So it's, it's, this is not a guessing game. I think this, this study here was done, was very accurately done. Whether or not it's subjected to some discussion of moving things around, that's one thing. But we are a long ways away from a one point nine this year and a two point three million next year is what their recommended spend. Till we're looking at these numbers, we're not even in the ballpark.
But Ed, you can't do that.
Do what?
We can't do that. And you know we can't do that.
I.
And it's saying is that should be the foundation. We should start there and you, and you chisel back.
Of what you are going to do, but at least you know what your liability is. Right now with this, it's a guess. It's a royal guess.
No, they're saying the blue they want to buy.
Okay, so let me ask you this. So the pool furniture and fixture is not in blue, so.
Because it's, it's gonna cost more than fifty thousand dollars to do a splash pad.
So.
So you have to accrue that money over the four years to.
So do you see how they're not?
It's not, it's not a capital reserve study.
I don't want to sell the residents an idea and then come here and, 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 and do something totally opposite. So we were asking for initiatives, then we would decide. So if, if that's what they want, and if we need to do it, you know, if they want it for next year, because it's next year, we told them twenty twenty-four initiative, next year. So my expectation was if it's going to be two hundred thousand dollars, that goes in there. And then we would decide, okay, this is one item that we definitely not gonna do next year because it's twenty twenty-four, we defer to two years down the road and so forth. But then that total amount should have been in there. Same thing when you look for, um, I thought I saw dog park. Let's see here.
Well, our problem is lending expenses with a cash flow, and you don't do it that way. You can't do it that way. It won't work.
Yeah.
We're trying in the right hand to talk capital improvement and the left hand.
Yeah.
So, so, so you see how we didn't? I don't know if that was the top, but my assumption is we really look at price. So like for the dog shade structure, we put it in that we needed. And that went as a first item. Everything's gonna get in twenty twenty-four. But for some reason, the stuff for the pool did it. And then you go down below, same thing when you go soccer balls, like the, which I think soccer goals, which I, I don't, is that the goals itself or that's netting?
The goals themselves.
Okay, so that, that, it, it doesn't need it uh right now, the nets, maybe.
We just replaced.
Yeah, so I think.
Because it isn't blue until twenty twenty-seven.
But then like basketball goals. Basketball goals. Look at the basketball goals.
And you budget it, or you don't put it in there to begin with.
But.
It's one or the other. But here's the thing, is that we're not showing on this, and this is another fallacy. We have got to take, and you go to these four items, uh Laura, if you could pan up a little bit to go to the, there you go. Roadway, landscape and irrigation, that is a, that's one of our items. We're showing three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. What we need out there in that left-hand column is how much money do we have cash and capital for that category? How much cash do we have for Parks and Rec? How much cash do we have for each of those?
It's not broken out by categories.
It's unreserved. So we can allocate it any way we want to.
Yes.
We need to then go back and allocate it. Because that's going to, boy, I'll tell you, you've got to realize that with this methodology, you can move stuff around and have a tremendous impact on a certain group of people. A tremendous impact. For example, moving stuff from Parks and Rec over to admin ain't gonna make them happy. Because on one, they pay nothing. On the other, they pay one for one. All of those things need to be thought about on this, and we're not, it just doesn't even take that into consideration. So I'd much rather see start out with like, maybe not exactly the way they did it, but take their categories of things that are in there that we just argue, we, we don't agree with. Take those out and pitch them. But then come in with a line item, and instead of showing a cash flow here across the top, just show the year you anticipate expending on each of those items. Whatever it is. For example, if it's that Ford twenty twenty-two Ranger, if that's gonna be twenty-eight thousand and we need it estimated in twenty thirty, put twenty-eight thousand in twenty thirty. Budget that. Then we go back to the bottom line, start with what the cash is that we want to take out of reserves if we have three point six million. And we just look at it, and it's not easy. You work backwards. You see what the number you, you have, and then you go back and prorate and say, I'm gonna give Parks and Rec one point two of the three point six million. Then figure out how much you need per year.
And I would like to see, if we've paid money for the, the capital reserve study, that should be the baseline moving forward. So if we use that, you know, that format, we should be able to go through it uh and cross off anything that we don't feel is accurate or move it around and then add anything. Instead of starting with the, with a fresh, and there's probably a lot of time put into this. But I almost feel like i- if we're paying for a study and there's an outline there, we should build off that.
Well, the big thing is to show the cost. We can always argue, if you guys feel that his costs were off, I don't have a problem with that. Uh, but make sure that the year that we think we need, we're going to expend it, get that in here. And to tell you the truth, I think going out past twenty thirty-one, you're guessing like hell to begin with. So the big thing is, is let's just see what it does when you get that and start distributing this money using two hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, whatever the number is as a capital to see, does it, does it take us uh into red ink, or do we have enough to, to make it through? One thing you could do, you either raise the reserve, change the cost, or reallocate the amount of cash.
And to Carol's point, if, if you're.
I think you and I are trying to get to the same place. But I'm looking at it with, starting with this, you're looking at it starting with the reserve study. I don't think it makes a bit of difference. Why don't we just pick one or the other?
As long as you tell us, we gotta have when you spend the money. That is critical.
I agree with that.
Thought replacement, a hundred, 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 hundred. If we're going to spend it a hundred, 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 then that's accurate. But I don't think we're gonna do that. We're gonna spend it in one year or two years or four-year increments or whatever, but I don't think we're gonna spend it a hundred, 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 hundred.
And we've got this, we've got the money.
Can you guys go back to a um reserve study approach? And basically take this and plug it into a reserve study?
So what I want, I want to be clear. So you don't want to save up the money for the replacement, for the year of replacement. You just want to budget that anticipating.
No, I want to do just the opposite. I want to know exactly, truthfully, based upon assumptions, what the plan is. We can then always come back and say we're going to fund it fifty percent or forty percent.
Let's take that, let's take that two thousand fourteen Ford F-one fifty. So if the, if the replacement cost is, let's just say thirty thousand.
You put.
There would be nothing, there would be nothing in twenty-four, and then there would be thirty thousand in twenty twenty-five.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then the way you handle that is all those costs added down create your cash flow. You'll have what your starting balance is, what you put in each year, and then you'll just run a balance. You'll uh spend so much at the year. Take that to the next year as the starting, spend so much, put in so much, it's just a up and down. You just don't want it to go red on this study. In other words, fully funded. Then go back and when you get the sticker shock, which is what this.
It's almost like there should be.
Then you could start shaving it.
It, it almost sounds like too, we should have two columns. One is your expenditures and then one is your, you know, what your, what your reserve is.
Yeah.
Instead of trying to combine them in one, what is going out, what's coming in?
One's a statement.
You should be able to calculate and understand what your deficit.
One's a statement of your expenditures, the other one's a cash flow.
Yeah.
And the cash flow at the bottom is the one that you're talking about manipulating.
Study.
And with all due respect, I would only go out five years.
Yeah, very similar.
So the reason we went out ten years is because the bond was out ten years. If you want to stick to five years, we can stick, we can go back to five years.
I'd go to ten years, but just keep in mind, our, our eye.
Anything past five.
Crosshairs are along the five years.
So I, I have another question. So let's say that, I go back to that Ford F-one fifty. Let's say it's, it's projected to be replaced in twenty twenty-five and.
I can tell you historically, our vehicles have lasted about eight years.
Something, something happens and it, it go, it it's, it's not working in twenty twenty-four. So then do you pull the twenty, the thirty thousand dollars out of your reserves to fund that?
You do just like we did over at Gateway. We had that very same thing happen. What you do is you redo the, the account, you bring something back, you re-crunch the numbers. You reallocate it.
So yes.
Yeah.
Big document.
You lose the street signs and there's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that you had planned on replacement in twenty twenty-eight that you had to do in twenty twenty-three? Just move that cost forward, recalculate.
I, I just.
This is a great start. The only thing that this, on this, we need to do is accurately determine when each of these things need to be actually spent. And then legitimately what the cost is. We want everything to be true, factual, because you can manipulate it at the bottom and/or adjust it at the bottom by ma- just making an assumption. We're not going to a hundred percent fund, we're going to fifty percent.
So here's my concern with that. So let's take, we have another hur- Hurricane Ian.
Retained earnings.
We deplete the reserves and now it's next year and we're trying to fund the capital reserve and put our three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Don't mix, don't mix hurricane, what the accounts sold us, don't mix that with capital reserve. Have that as a retained earnings balance.
Just take an unexpected expense.
Yep.
You're pulling and you're depleting your reserves and then you come next year instead of being three hundred and fifty thousand or four hundred.
No, that's not what you do. Just the ops, you don't do that. What you do is you either have a retained earnings of maybe two months of operating costs that's setting aside there that's available for emergency. Or you take in it the thing that everybody loves, a special assessment, which is what we did over in ours, five hundred thousand dollar special assessment.
Because the one thing, one second, the one thing that I, I would like for Stu moving forward is, we did a capital reserve back in two thousand eight. It was reviewed and it was put on a shelf.
Because of this very reason.
Right.
But I don't.
You wanted to swallow the pill.
So what I'd like to do is, and I think this shows good faith in, in us doing the right thing and then walking the wall. We've got this capital reserve study that we've done. So if we build our plan off the baseline of this capital reserve and we refer back to it, now we've paid for something that we're using as a guideline uh for how we operate moving forward, uh as opposed to just saying, yeah, we got a reserve, you know, we did this, but we're not, we're not doing anything with it.
This thing.
And you're gonna have more accurate figures if you take these figures here and plug them into the reserve study parameter.
Now there's a purpose for everything we do.
The other thing is, is that the, we have budgeted to our capital reserve study over there, money to pay to have the study updated every two years.
Yeah.
Because you're, nobody's smart enough and good enough, and especially if you're doing roads. This gasoline and oil just took the paving prices and basically doubled them. Who, who put that kind of money in of thirty dollars a square yard to do blacktop? Nobody. But that's what you're gonna pay now. So you have to go back and recalculate.
So I have one question before you, otherwise I'm here. So that, then, under your notes, so some say submitted by pool task. That means the item or that means the value?
The, the.
Or both.
Both, both, they submitted, they submitted the estimate.
So to me, like that.
I, I want to, we just got the initiatives on Friday from the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. We have to amend this because this agenda went out last Tuesday.
Because I, I'm just concerned of, you know, that to me, that is solely staff.
That's just staff.
The cost, there should be staff, not, there shouldn't be, the, the, the pool task or the dog park user should not be telling what the cost is.
At least validated. This, this could be out of somebody's backside.
So then we are missing then initiatives from them. Didn't receive anything from residents. Emails, any initiative that they would like to see that needed to be.
I have not, I, I have not seen them. So. Do you have anything else?
No, so.
So I, I have a question because with the reserve study, they're proposing one point two million dollars for next year. This is only proposing seven hundred and eighty and we want to cut it in half already.
Well, we have to look and see what, what's, what's the discrepancy and.
That's my point.
Yeah.
See what we're really going to cut.
Because you know, when we got talking to them, some of this stuff was very argumentative on the stormwater side. And, and I mean argumentative with six-digit numbers, three and four hundred thousand. You start changing three and four hundred thousand dollar numbers and you move this number significantly.
And I'm sure you can go to them and say, can you give me, can you send me your Excel spreadsheet and you use that as your baseline?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
That would be very easy.
Yeah, and then you're just plugging in and you got version control on it. There's a lot of really cool stuff.
Well, have you verified that is all of your line items here per category, the same as in the report?
I'm sorry?
Are all of the line items you have here in columns, whatever numbers those are, for each of the four or five categories, are all of the needs? Are they duplicated in the need study, the capital reserve study? Or are there stuff in here that you don't have in here? Which I hope not.
It's, it's, we double checked both.
Okay, okay. So then we are pretty, pretty good.
Let me be clear because like.
There, there's some small, very small items that are not here, but I want to give you the right answer. There's some small items that are not here, but they're here, but they're very small.
So like for instance, the roads, that's in bond. You're not gonna see that here.
And that is the one thing we want to get out of here. If there's stuff, stuff in here that's going to the bonds, that's a P and I that goes as a separate entry.
No, there is nothing in here that is in the bonds.
Okay, good. That's why we want.
Things in the study.
That go to the bonds.
That's great.
That's probably where the discrepancy is gonna come in. And is there any reason why we would not have a view? A C I P uh, view that includes both bond items and non, and we just exclude the bond items from the calculation?
We can, we can do that. Down by categories. It's its own sheet. We have it as its own sheet right now. But if you want to have it as one comprehensive sheet and we can do bonding as different colors and then have that at the very bottom, have a total of general fund. Bond, fund, total.
And then an app breaks that shows that if you're putting in, let's make up a number, fifty thousand dollars into the budget. For principal and interest payment on bonds for something, show what it is.
Cause you want to have that calculation.
So you know what it is. What are, what, what is that fifty thousand buying? That, that we're amortizing over a period of what, ten, twenty years?
If you do it that way, then you also, I can tell you what the next two years, potential target assessment is gonna be. Probably plus or minus of.
You're gonna be very close.
So then, didn't we say we had three hundred thousand dollars that we set aside for Parks and Recs on the bonds? Okay, so if you just take that alone, so Parks and Recs in here, the total is three fifty five, eight hundred. But that means really, if we're gonna use the, in twenty twenty five, the entire bond, then we only need fifty five thousand dollars.
That's the same items.
These stuff.
Well, i- it's general, it's everything here, well, she has it listed as Parks and Recs total, so it should be only Parks and Recs.
No, no, that's all I'm saying.
Well, the reason it's.
These items and what's in the bond items might not be the same, right? There, there should be different.
I don't think, I don't think that these guys were told when they did it, what our methodology is. So they lumped it together. And then to make it even more worse, they lumped in bond related costs. What we need to do is to pull the bond, non-bond related stuff out of here, make sure it's in here. And then when you get done adding the numbers and you feel confidence on where they're at. Go back and take what we have as an unreserved, non-dedicated cash reserve. And then, and then you split it up.
Split it proportionally to.
However you feel that it would be best to do, and then let the chips fall away.
But we still want those items that are in the bond.
Yeah, separate deal.
Oh, well, you need to categorize them so you can include, include and exclude them from your, from your views. So you can filter them.
Do we understand?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we?
I think we're on the same page. And I don't think it's that difficult to do, because you've got the format to do it almost immediately. The format's there. And that's what we've been lacking.
The, the, the last of the year.
Just two comments. I know Mr. Tinkle mentioned that if there's a funding shortfall, we do a special assessment. When you talk about C D D's special assessments in between the annual special assessments you do that go on the tax rolls, it's a direct bill. Goes to the, you have to go through the same notice and hearing process. And then it's a direct bill to the property owner. If they don't pay, the only way to collect is, is either foreclosure.
That's exactly what we're doing there.
Or roll it to the next uh, assessment rule, that's one. Or a lot of other districts will take out a line of credit for hurricane season, emergency line of credits, five hundred, seven hundred fifty thousand. And that's relatively an expensive way to do that, and you can even tag it solely for emergency purposes, but that's, a number of districts have done that.
Well, there's another one, this, to make sure we're all on same page on obligations. It's my understanding that once we set up a capital reserve and a capital reserve contribution. That money is locked, is to capital reserve. You don't bring it back and put it in operating.
If you do, you have to go through the notice and hearing process, just as if you increase the assessment. As you all know, if you increase the assessment one penny over the prior year, you have to go through that process.
Capital fund instead of a capital reserve. Transfer to a ca- like this could be a capital fund and then.
Not talking capital versus general operation.
And as we're doing this, I would love, Chelsea, for you and Lauren to be thinking about, how do we document our budget methodology? Let's say residents, because when we look at reserves versus bonding. The, our position on the bond issue was, there are things that we need to get done. The best way to, you know, to, to finance that is over a twenty year bond. So you're, you know, you're amortizing. This reserves is doing, basically the same thing, but in reverse order. So we're going to, you know, the same thing Stonyburg is potentially looking at with roads. We can do it two ways. We can set a reserve aside, so when the repair needs to be done, we have the cash on hand. Or we do a bond at the, at the point of when the replacement needs to be done. And the people ahead fifteen down, down fifteen years down the road, we are actually combining those, you know, those approaches. But I want to make sure that we've got a very clear methodology statement that we can give to our residents, because we're, we're utilizing both aspects. Both the bond and a, a reserve approach.
When you come up with big ticket, and we're dealing here with a little rinky dick stuff. You start talking big ticket items that have long service lives. I'd argue with what you're saying every time, that that's the way to do it. Get out there to the year that you gotta do the paving, the paving's gonna last twenty to twenty five years, why are you making the people that are here right now pay for it? Bond it for twenty five years and pay the P and I for twenty five years.
We need to articulate when, when this methodology is applicable and why we're doing it this. Cause now we're taking advantage of two different approaches and applying them where it makes physical sense.
And this bond thing that we set up allows us that we can go back and forth in this. We're not, our hands are not tied. That we have to do this. We can always take and go and send stuff that's on that category over to this one. And this one over to that one to pay for a bond, especially if it's got a long service life. Why would you want?
That's the key is, is with the bond, it was the long service life, twenty plus years. Whereas the majority of these items here have a fifteen year life or less. Yes, many are ten or less.
But the one thing we're gonna have to explain is, or the position for the, for the bond is, it was part, we have done a ten year plan with, with, let's say. Cycles of three, what was it, cycles of three years? Three years?
Three to four years.
So we're planning out, we're, you know, we're, we need to do those things. Now we're doing that, plus we're adding additional.
Covering everything.
We're covering everything.
We're covering everything.
So, you know, what people were anticipating next year's, or next year's assessment just being normal wear and tear. And then also the bond item will also have another line item, which is the, which is the reserve. So there will be an increase that, I mean, potentially, that we, residents may not have been anticipating because we're, we're actually doing the right thing.
So we are, just if, if you guys are good with the general fund, I think we've got, we've got clear direction. Are you good? So we're good with the, the direction and we will work on this to try to bring it back to you soon.
I have three by Thursday. It just depends on how my day goes tomorrow. It should be a pretty easy. It's just incorporating the other, so it depends on how my day goes tomorrow. I'm not promising anything, but I'm making.
Challenge is going to be.
Because there are intricacies with the bond and the payment of, like, for instance, the admin building, how Pelican was paying a portion.
Here there's Gateway, Pelican and the utility.
That, that's the methodology issue.
And I applaud staff for actually having the courage to do this type of approach. It's something we've been talking about for years.
We were almost there last year, but we got there.
This is, this is easy to adjust going forward. It's hard getting it to this point to start.
It's also justifiable, but we can support.
Pull your hair out trying to get this.
Well, just, just like you are in your own personal home, you know all of the items that you own, that, you know, your oven's gonna have a life expectancy, your refrigerator, et cetera. And that's, we've identified all of the district's assets that are twenty five hundred dollars and more. We've put a lifespan of what we expect to have left on them, and we have anticipated the year of replacement. So.
The only, only thing you might need on these, it's just a couple of more vacant lines. For, for things to be filled in as they come in, but the, the, the format's perfect. It's great.
So let me ask you this. So when we're looking at hardwood trimming, right, so we haven't had, that, we had like random and very select feel hardwood. So, and I believe the report that we, again, the report that we paid for it, we don't want to be on the shelf. It said there was a majority that needed to be trimmed or removed or whatever. Why wouldn't that all be in one?
I was told, or I might have thought of it, I don't know. Somebody told me, I believe somebody told me that we couldn't do all of the hardwoods in one year. It takes three years.
We do it every other year, totally.
Correct.
You have no expense one year, you have two hundred thousand the next, no expense another year.
Get it. That report came two years ago. From two years ago to now, nothing was done. Do you see what I'm saying? So this is the third year.
Are you not doing?
We have to budget for.
No, we had it in the budget.
For this year.
Well, I, I can't speak this, but I can tell you we are.
So, so, so that's what I was saying, like, I'm, I'm totally okay with every three years. But since that report came, I can count on maybe both hands, the amount of tree that it was actually trimmed. And usually it was like if it was a safety issue.
Who did the report?
So you do a third, a third, a third.
Uh, we had an arborist. Cause he identified specifically the tr- each tree and what tree needed to be trimmed, and if this one is not a trim, it's a full removal. So we never really follow up on that, and we should have, because now two years passed.
But if you do a third, in every three years, they're gonna be doing it every year.
We do it every other year.
So, so, and, but then, there is no money. How they gonna die? What happens in twenty twenty seven?
So I, I wasn't aware that that report existed, so I'll go back and look at that. So I'm gonna tell you another example. So.
See, to me, that was a.
Said that at the last meeting, you don't put landscaping in a capital reserve.
Clear. So when I asked the capital reserve guy if landscaping should be included in capital reserve, he said no. Unless you're doing major replacement or, or, or maintenance or whatever, if it's a large funded project. Then you could put it in there.
But either way you go, e- either, either way you go, it's, it's gonna be cash that you gotta incur, so, I mean.
That's why. I believe the report itself actually had a cost evaluated to it, because he didn't at first, and I think Doug actually brought it up. That we wanted to see how much is, if we were to implement your report, how much would this cost? And we went back with him and I think he said as an additional document what he thought the cost was.
Well, I'll, I'll get my hands on that report. So I want to give you another example of another report that was done years ago, that no action was taken. A report, a, a, re, re, oh my goodness. A report was done of this tank back here for the irrigation, the, the, the big tank that holds on. The storage tank. It was done in two thousand nineteen. There were suggestions of, of minor repairs and some work that needed to be done. The work was never done. We got an estimate, it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to do the minor repairs. Now, in talking to Raph Tellis, who's doing our utilities capital reserve study.
Where it go?
What they said was, you can put that type of maintenance in capital if it extends the useful life of the tank.
Exactly right.
Why are you laughing? Cause you guys have heard this before?
Okay, that's what I repeated yesterday.
So I just, I'm giving you another example where a report was done, sat on a shelf and, and no.
So on the enterprise, we would expect to see that as a line item.
On the, on the ops, on the.
Okay, and who, so now let me ask you this, cause I went through that.
No, no, it won't be enterprise. It'll be, yeah, it'll be enterprise.
Who will make the decision that will be extending the life? We will? Cause we did that on my H O A. And then I did get pushed back from the reserve guys. I asked him, I say, I want you to go adjusted, here's the documentation. If we do this, it's gonna extend the period of this particular item five years. Maybe, you know, longer. No, not doing it. So I had to come up with a lot of documentation to give it to him, to him to finally go back into the reserve study and adjust that. So are you gonna be making the call? You're gonna have to still go back to the reserve?
The guy who did the report, he put in the report that if you do these things, at the end of the report, it says it'll extend the useful life of this.
That's, that was really important.
So this was general fund. Do we want to go to enterprise fund? I mean, I, well, we have to make some adjustments for the enterprise fund based on the comments that you guys said.
I'd say almost a repeat. If it's the same deal, it's a repeat. It'd just be the same thing.
But do you want to see the numbers now for the enterprise fund?
That attachment to.
Thank you. But it's the same, same, same deal, same format, same thing. The only difference is, now, you've got to separate this into the three utilities. Water, sewer and irrigation.
It, it is, but how?
A big, 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 big difference. Because right now, our irrigation account, over these next couple of years, is going to get blasted with capital needs. And making the people on the water and sewer side pay for that, when they, they might not have any land whatsoever, except a building and no grass. I don't think they want to pay for that.
So this enterprise fund is including Pelican Preserve or not including Pelican?
Not, including.
Okay, those that would get water.
This is funded through the water bills.
People that are on the city.
And Pelican, if you get water and sewer, then you would be involved in this enterprise fund.
It's, it's broken out into administrative, irrigation, wastewater and potable.
So this includes not only F F and E, furniture, fixture and equipment, but it includes projects.
Okay, you don't have bonds in here, do you?
There's no bonds for the enterprise.
No bonds in there for that. So when you say projects, it's capital projects? Okay, okay, so that, that's nothing wrong with that. Again, the only thing you gotta do here now is just go back through the same thing. And this is where the guest comes, like on those pump stations.
This does have S R F, this does have um, S R F funds in here, but it's, it's noted in the notes. So what we can do is.
Put it at the bottom or separate it, because you, if you do your cash flow on the reserve here, you don't want them being influenced by that.
So there were some projects on here, and, and I think I may have mentioned this in the past. That we've looked at the capital rates or the um, the rate study that was done a couple of years ago. We've looked at the budget with our current fiscal year and the projects that were in there. And there was one other thing that we looked at. Some of these projects, most of these projects I'm familiar with. The two million gallon storage tank, I don't know where that came from.
That came from a, we were having troubles on making sure that we had enough water. To get to handle peak demands in the north end of our system, and what the thought was is to put in a two million gallon tank. Irrigation. Irrigation, irrigation. Uh, so that's where that came from. But that, this one, this enterprise is a little bit different on it in that. The majority of these items will have long-term service lives. So the majority of these, I would hope to see go to an S R F loan or bonding.
Pro- projects, yes. F F and E, no.
Oh, no, no, I agree.
That's already funded by the S R F, right?
That's what she is gonna separate those out.
Be the different color.
So that's what.
But we deferred that.
When you get.
We still need to recover the P and I through the, through the water bills. So they were still as an expense, it's just not that giant one point one million dollars.
Yeah, I think when you get done redoing this one, it's gonna shrink up, because most of it's gonna probably be bond related. You would hope.
Are, are you talking about the tank that we're going to put in when we're, we're, we needed the need for the water? And also because we're, when we're at, we're at capacity, we're.
See, this is, this is one of the things, one of those moving deals that we need to uh, talk to Tetra Tech about and staff needs to get a handle on. If we get that Hawthorne well in there and we increase our pumping capacity, and this whole thing is about peak. Can we handle, everything we do on irrigation is peak, it's peak. So can we handle a peak demand? A lot of times, you handle a peak demand by having storage. Water tanks, you have water tank to handle a peak demand. Yeah, well, other, other than they're just purely pumping it out into the system to meet the peak on an instantaneous basis, which means you'd have to have. Ten, twelve thousand gallon per minute pumps out here. Well, that assumes that you've got ten to twelve thousand gallon minute of water coming out of the ground. You can't pump air. To a way to avoid that is you put it in a tank and you store it, and you take it out of there to meet your pan, peak. That was what we were anticipating doing at that time. But now that we're talking about doing that Hawthorne, maybe we need to reexamine the need for that two billion gallon tank. We may be able to defer it. We may be able to defer it.
Well, and that's why it, it was pushed out on here to twenty twenty-five, cause I, I, well, just mere workload. But is this an actual need? And then we're talking about the, the uh, excess irrigation. My understanding, that's what the spray field and the, the redundant line down the FPL is for.
Two separate issues. The, the redundant, the spray field down the irrigation or down the uh, uh, FPL. Was we have a contract with Lee County that we have to use every drop of that water for airi- or for uh, uh.
Irrigation.
Irrigation, irrigation purposes. We can't go dump it in a creek or drunk, dump it in the ocean or dump it in a lake or any of that. Our only choice is to go down the FPL East, but or do what we've done over the years.
Put it in the street.
We go out there and put it in the street, well, and it's in the middle of a rain. And it, it's, it's insanity, especially when that stuff is so valuable. So another option on that would be to go out here and use the county's e- extras, uh, what do you call it, lagoon. Talk to them about it and use the overflow instead of pump it, pumping it out and just wasting it. Like putting it in the FPL East, but all it's gonna do is grow weeds. Use it for something valuable or store it.
Okay, so, so I'm going to see this. So there's eight hundred fifty thousand F twenty-six. So we are willing.
What number?
The FPL's free irrigation system, right? That's what Ed's talking about.
Looks a lot.
Oh, yeah. One on. Yeah.
He don't, it's a one on one, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's in there purely, that we don't get in a position, that we have a weak rain in the summertime. And we got water and it's overflowing out there in the plant and we aren't drinking it. So we gotta get rid of, what do we do with it? This is the.
Here, here's what my thought came, and, and I, when I saw this, when we talked about this years past, I was like. We don't have any irrigation, and I have mentioned this when Shoemaker was here. We have no irrigations besides this small drip line. From Timber Creek all the way to eighty-two on the side of Griffin. Why, and that's the reason why we cannot have fluorotan. That's the reason why none of the, the shrubs underneath of those flower beds, uh, you know, they grow. To me, instead of doing the FPL Eastman, I would rather do the beautification on the Griffin side, which is an asset. You're driving by that road. And irrigation line, which.
You want us to change that name to Griffin?
Just keep, keep in mind though, there's, there's.
But didn't we say that irrigation system, remember how I asked you, like if Griffin was included on the whole, so then you. To me, would it be just eliminate, you're, you're having a doubles. To me, just eliminating the eight fifty, because you mentioned that. Griffin was already included on the other one. So that's, you know, almost a million dollars that we're gonna be just fully removing it.
Keep in mind, this is all in an emergency, whether you have it on Griffin or whether you have it anywhere. If it doesn't need water and it's raining, you're not gonna put water on it. They'll be doing the same thing we're doing right now, putting it out there on Gateway Boulevard. So you want a place to put it that it's not going to have an impact. You gotta get rid of it. You have to get rid of it. That's our contract with county.
So you're saying if we hook up this irrigation line, then it'll just.
Well, if we hook it up and rely on it to go up Griffin and it's already raining. You're, you're not gonna put it on the road. You won't put it on there. That's the problem. We have a need for it there in dry season.
I think.
But we don't have a need that it protects us in the wet season.
Let's do this, because the irrigation system replacement is anticipated in these, the, these three years. This year, next year, and the, the year after.
We've gone to the controllers.
To, to do, yes. And if, if we get to twenty twenty-six. And we still feel that this FPL spray irrigation system is needed after we've gotten Griffin irrigated, then we'll address it at the time.
So then.
We've got it on the scope. This is one of those that you don't have to jump and do that.
I agree.
But our big, big issue is, is that when we see a rain event coming, keep in mind, we only have six million gallon storage over there. Six million gallon when they're doing one point five, two million gallon a day of water. It doesn't stop. People keep paying and they use water. And it's just gonna keep coming. You gotta get rid of it. We gotta have an alternative plan or be ready. That's why maybe what we might wanna do is in the interim is go to the county and find out this, this lagoon that's setting over here. Can we use that? I mean.
Are you talking about the wetland or?
It's in the FPL Eastman.
You're talking about the, the wetland? Or a lagoon or the wetland that's right behind you, the FPL Eastman?
Wetland, it's a, it's a physical man-made lagoon that was made for an overflow.
It's dry. Yeah, it's on the uh, over towards Stony Brook.
Okay, I don't.
Yeah, no, it's just, it's just right, right out here.
Yeah.
You can see it on the area. But anyway, the issue is, is that that would be a place that with minimal money, you could pour a hell of a lot of water. Uh, and get you through it. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Pump it in, pump it out. Well, you gravity flow it in, but you'd have to pump it out.
It would be a, uh.
That's a, that's a, that, that's a.
That's our two.
That's, that's, that's a very wishful, a lot of moving parts and having the county okay us to do that.
There, there is your problem, having the county okay.
So I, I think.
Because the county wants the water and they want us to make a mistake.
And I do, and then the sooner that we were able to put back is the sooner that we add irrigation to Griffin, because then we'll be able to, so. If it's the, in the next three years, and I know we talked about actually starting from Stony Brook, you know, Gateway, so maybe we have to rethink that. Maybe do the Griffin first, cause then at least we have one year of like, okay, we already got rid of it. We may still need that. None of the capacity that we thought, so we're gonna delay the FPL spray all over here for another two more years.
Well, the, the issue on Griffin is the, the irrigation pipes there. What we don't have is the irrigation system.
Yeah.
We don't have the heads and the controllers. That's, that's not a big ticket item.
Because of the, the roundabout that's going in, um, the first controller for this program actually went in up. Uh, just this side of the seven eleven on that side.
By the, by the pump station?
Uh, across the street.
Across the street.
Yeah, there's some other equipment over there. So the, there, the controller is already there, and that has enough to do from. Griffin all the way up to eighty-two on that side, so it can do two hundred zones.
So I think it's a good time to handle it. I think it's all. I, I think it's, it's all working it out because the county finally said, I mean, the school finally said, go ahead and put the sign, so. Now they park there because there is no irrigation, but now we're gonna have grass irrigation, so. And then signs, it's, it's kinda, everything is working in the right order to get this to the same shape that we have.
I would be opposed to another line item right in there. Uh, Griffin uh, irrigation control zone.
We already have it. We already have it. Because the one that was installed the roundabout, we'll take care of it all the way down.
Where is it at in here?
Bounty Park?
Bond, it's, it's part of the bond.
It's a bond item.
Oh, it's a bond item. Okay, okay.
That first controller is meant to do.
Like two hu- did they say two hundred zones or something like that? Yeah.
So they would be able to do all of that and possibly start going back towards Daniels.
So, it might not be a bad idea that you give uh, Tetra Tech a call and find out. That two million gallon storage tank, which was a uh, a, a peak issue. If we put in that Hawthorne well, that we've kind of deferred for a while because we can't get it better. Uh, if we put that in, what does that do to our capacity? It, but I don't think it'll take very long, but the history is, the issue is, is, well, that, that's a big ticket item.
But the lower Hawthorne well supplementing what the, we don't, we haven't, we're not able to meet our demand. That's why the wells are supplementing the effluent coming from the plant.
My question is, does it supplement our peak or do we still need the, the storage tank?
Okay. Um. I had something, utilities.
Logically, what I'd like to do is have a tank out here, but the problem with it is our demand is up there. And the last thing I wanna do is put in another damn parallel pipe. Get the water up there, put it in a tank and store it, and then feed all that in out of that thing. But let Tetra Tech tell us now.
Can't put the tank up on our construction.
On our construction road? I don't know if they'll let us put it in the FPL Eastman. I doubt it, thank you all that.
Have you a logical place to put it?
It's FPL. Nothing.
Okay.
Keep going, you're making my case. You're making my case. Okay.
Well, tell them we're gonna, we're gonna defunder it, but we just wanna put it out in the grass.
Well, if we do it right, we do like a small township. We have our own tower with Gateway on it.
Hurricane, you'd put it up in Orlando too.
Well, it won't land on us.
Okay, so we'll do the same thing. Oh, I, what I was gonna tell you is, we're, we're moving along. Austin is actually heading up the capital reserve study for, for the utilities. And um, wha- I believe the board mentioned at one point the actual pipe in ground, what the useful life is left on that. Um, and so trying to get them as much information as we can to has built things like that. Pipe, ti- type, sizes, et cetera. So they are going to be estimating um, the actual pipe and ground life left. So that should be coming to you guys here in the next couple of months for the capital reserve study for the enterprise fund.
Do you have Aspils? Do we know what's there?
Uh, we, we do, yes.
Your, your problem with pipe in the ground and every other community's always ran into.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that its service life is forty, fifty, sixty, seventy years. I don't know anybody that has ever, at the even of seventy years, said rip it out, start anew, and you make it work. So you patch it, repair and replace. So when it comes down to things with those kind of service lives. Uh, putting them into this, it really masquerades it. It's not a true representation.
And that's, he, he was working through percentages and calculations and what maintenance has been done to date, et cetera. So, um, but. We're moving along with the enterprise fund.
Same thing, well, the difference is pump stations.
Pipes right now.
Eighty-six is when the Catwin Gateway really incorporated. Well, how old's Gateway Greens?
Well, the, the, the big.
You came up Gateway Boulevard, sure. About thirty-eight years, girl.
Probably you're. Probably about ten years less than that because the majority of it was built in, let's say, ninety-five.
Well, the oldest.
The oldest would be thirty-eight, yeah.
All right, do we wanna go to Pelican Preserve? We've got thirty some odd years to go, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
I'll be dead by then, Ed. I will. I don't need to pay for it today, Ed.
Oh, I won't live that long, so I can say I told you so.
All right, go to Pelican, go to Pelican.
Same thing. We'll do the exact same thing that, that we talked about.
Obviously, it won't be bond, but it'll be, the bond portion won't be part of this, but it'll be the year spent and then back, back into it.
Okay.
Uh, I'm, I'm just asking to ask, but why do we have twenty-five? Years are there, I mean, it's all done.
You're gonna have to replace them at some point, but that's why we'll, we'll talk, we're gonna go back to waiting until twenty, thirty, forty, whatever the. Yeah, that'll, that'll be.
There, there's some that are gonna go outs- outside the picture of this.
Is another one.
And the, well, yeah, the boardwalk, that won't be. Point repairs is in the early operational budget right now in the community.
Maybe, maybe what you wanna do.
Do we, well, hold on, this is a question for the board, because we have the point repairs and the bond. Do we wanna be consistent and have point repairs and capital here?
You don't have any point repairs in the bond for Pelican?
No.
We've always, it's because of the dollar amount, because it's only twenty-five thousand dollars or forty thousand, whatever it is, we've always just done them as.
I don't think it should be in here because they're already accounting for the work.
Right.
In their yearly budget as operations.
Since the point repairs extend the service life of the pond, I, I would say keep it in the bond.
Well, this is for Pelican.
This is Pelican.
Page it go.
My, my point was, in Pelican, we're putting it in operating budget, and then in Gateway, we're putting it in the bond. So we're being, we're treating it differently.
Correct.
So I just.
Pelican historically has just handled theirs through the operating.
And they have always budgeted and done it.
Laura, another thing you can do, think about, is go out there to twenty thirty-four, put in another column that's twenty thirty-five out. And put everything, just so that we don't lose it. Put chunks in there because it's, it's not, not gonna mean anything at this point in time, but at least it identifies that we pictured it. And we know that it falls in that timeline.
Everything that's in the waterway management total, zero capital burden, is already accounted for in the operating budget.
Should be, yeah, it looks right.
Sorry, we're, they're already doing all.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's in operations, they're used to it. If, if this is a reason, reject, I don't think they need that, cause they've already.
Well, where are you pulling the funding for it from?
That's our non-add the law. We paid every year.
As in a certain sort of, start out of capital?
Correct. Then they go and tap into it, have something special come down.
They made, they differentiated it. You could do it either way.
We're in the last year. While we won't wait for twenty-four.
And then.
There's mostly this stuff.
Yeah, some of that's no.
Their biggest problem on that is picking the year of when you're gonna expend it. It's gonna be the biggest.
Well, and the, we're, we're waiting on the final report from Tetra Tech for the roadway condition survey.
Yeah.
Um, but I did go ahead and plug in the numbers in here from, from that report.
This is, these are the three.
Two hundred thousand a year or something, two fifty.
Yeah, this, this is the three years based on the Tetra Tech report. This was what they projected for.
So that one, that, that one specifically, the roadway, is currently being paid for by their reserves. Hadn't been identified prior, but now they are identifying. And if they choose to increase their reserve funding. Compensate for this, but feedback decision. Not gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be in the capital reserve. Already paying for it, I didn't wanna change.
So, just a quick question, on an large ticket item, let's say like roads or it's something, you know, you know, pretty big. I know we said we, you know, we could do it at fifty percent. Um, can we sp- we split that? Can we do fifty percent uh, reserve funding? And then fifty percent bond at the time where the replacement, when the, when the need occurs?
If you're gonna go through the, you're talking new bond?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm saying hypothetically in the future, let's say like with Pelican Roads or Stephen Stony Brook Roads.
You can do anything, but if you're gonna spend the money on a bond, you might as well. The whole thing, cause you're gonna, you're gonna extend that twenty years out instead of, just like we had this conversation a year ago.
Or make the commitment that you're gonna do that.
Yes, make the commitment you're gonna.
Yeah, I was just thinking like, you know, if you wanna split the difference between. Roads are being used today and will be used in the future. You split that down the middle, like it's.
Well, think of this, and maybe this is. If we're talking about resurfacing Pelican Reserve, that could probably be about, but if you're talking about resurfacing a road in a.
Be same thing?
Well, I was thinking like just from.
We don't, because we don't wanna go out with those bonds. We're too expensive. So we just handle that in our regular internal operating expense using our reserve. That's historically what.
Well, I was, I was thinking in terms of, okay, I've lived here for twenty years. Um, so let's just say, let's say I spent that whole time in Stony Brook. I've been paying on that bond. You know, so I've been paying for those roads for twenty years.
That's the road that exists.
Yeah, I know, but that's, you know, that's to cover what's there today. And then at some point, those roads are gonna have to be repaired or resurfaced or whatever.
Hopefully, I've been debate on.
So, if I, if we institute reserves and I'm paying for those same roads again, if I wait until a point repair and we bond it. More than likely, the people in the next twenty years will be paying for it. So, you know, I was thinking.
That's, that, that's what a lot of people argue.
Yeah, so I was thinking maybe splitting the difference to say, okay, we're not gonna, we're not gonna fund it a hundred percent one direction. We're going to fund it fifty percent under, you know, reserves and fifty percent at, at some point in the future from a bond.
And that exactly is what Pelican is doing right now. They have chosen, when they got to Avila, it's a small thing, two hundred fifty thousand or less. And they, they decided to pay for that out of their already accumulated reserves. But when the date, the reckoning comes, that they've gotta do the major arteries.
It will be bond.
That would be appropriate.
Okay, okay. I, I was just throwing it out there as alternative solutions.
Good example of that is over in ours. We're out for bid right now on roads. We've got budgeted about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this year. Been dedicated for the roads. Those bids come in at five hundred thousand dollars, like I think they will. We're gonna do just exactly what we said, you said. We got two choices. We're gonna have a special assessment, which I might will be shot over.
Yeah.
Or we do a bond for ten, fifteen years. So it's, whether you plan for it or it happens. Either one, you have that option.
Either way.
So there's nothing wrong with it. Nothing wrong with it at all. But you just need to make sure everybody understands it, because people are gonna say. If I've heard this over and over and over about that damned hurricane, it, didn't you have any money set aside? Yeah, we had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside. But when we reused it all on that, we now can't meet the requirement of having the retained earnings of two months of deal. They, they, they just think it's like, it just comes from anywhere. You have to earn it. And the only way you can do that is plan for it. You either budget it or you kick it down the.
Well, and, and that leads me into like, when we look at Pel- at, at Stony Brook. Are there items we should be, so when we get to Stony Brook?
Are you going, I think Doug's ready to move on to Stony Brook.
You ready?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when we look at Stony Brook, are there items that we should be setting aside for reserve and others we should be. Planning for bond?
Well, the problem, Doug.
Or half and half.
The, the problem you got on Stony Brook that I looked at is, is two issues. Uh, uh, one is the issue of the uh, salary calculations and the percentages, and that can be discussed later. But the other one is, there is nothing in here for what the capital reserve guy estimated as in twenty thirty-one. But the other one is, there is nothing in here for what the capital reserve guy estimated as in twenty thirty-one. You've got one point nine million dollars in road.
Yeah.
And right now, this right here, you're generating six hundred and eight thousand out of one point nine. But no, that isn't even there. Uh, what's the, uh, dates? I can't see what year I'm on.
It's one point six.
There you go. You're, you're generating, uh, fifty-five thousand per year and thirty-one is eight years from now. That's four hundred thousand. So you've got one point four million dollars shortfall.
So this is where, what, exactly what I was saying, we're, uh, reserves will only get us.
About a third.
And then, uh, and then you'll have to bond their, have to bond their.
As long as the people in Stony Brook understand that. Then, and you go ahead and you want to go with that kind of a budget, whatever that creates on your, uh, capital reserves, it is what it, or on your assessment, it is what it is. But there's gotta be a footnote, this is not gonna cover you guys in twenty thirty-one. You're gonna be short about one point four million bucks. So just knowing it, knowing that that philosophy can be done, is just, it's got a risk associated here.
Yeah, so I, but I don't know, what I don't know if Stony Brook residents heard is. We're setting aside revenue because we have, there has been none, or at least it's been what, ten grand or something, very minimal.
It's, it's.
But even by going with this, these totals, it doesn't get us a hundred percent there.
No.
So this is not, you know, we're not trying to eat it all at once because one, it would be such a large number, we'd, we'd probably get. You know.
Are you going to need it?
Yeah, what you, you, yeah, I was doing a calculation. I thought it was something like a hundred and fifty thousand short.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We don't have to worry. They're in it for.
We don't have to be fast, we just have to be faster, Ned.
That's right.
That's not saying.
We know.
Yeah, that's how we're not worried. Even, even Carol's laughing over.
But the thing is that this does do though is points out that, uh, their capital reserve. Ten thousand ain't gonna get it.
Well, it's the same. Same method is gonna go for us, for them, and then.
Well, it also puts us in a position where we can't say we can't afford to do it.
Do your capital reserve rundown is on ten thousand?
Yes, for everything, all that.
Everything.
Stony Brook pro- proposed ten thousand in the reserves for the budget as well. They each awaited.
Okay, ours is two forty. And they're half of us. So they should be just prorating it on that. You would think it'd be around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand. So this number here is very far off of what it logically should be.
Well, that's what I would like to know on, on, on that. If you could send, uh, Chris. An email and ask him after yesterday's meeting, is he sticking to the report that he proposed prior to? Me talking, or does he wanna revise on his own? Cause, cause he provided those numbers pri- like first thing at the meeting and to you pri- the day prior.
They were follow, they were required to by a date certain based on their O and M. So if the board wants to give them the opportunity to amend their numbers. We can do that, but we need to set a date and time certain because we have to, we have to adopt our final, no later than June fifteenth.
I mean, Thursday.
Approved.
Approved. Adapt.
Approved, I'm sorry.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, there's not much.
Well, are we.
He can get it as an updated version by next, by Tu- Thursday, two days from now.
So.
He may say no, he may say this is what it is.
Are we gonna take the same approach that we've mentioned for Pelican and for Enterprise and for General Fund, that we only funded the year that we anticipated?
I, I didn't see any in the Pelican fund that would require capital. I mean, even the two hundred and eighty thousand for, for the roads, right now they're funding that internally. But that'll be.
See, that's what, that's why you really need this thing to see just exactly whether there's a need or not. This one right here, because I've been looking at it, there is a need. I mean, there is a, a, an increase that has to be done to be able to satisfy that projection.
Unless, unless they want to bond the hundred percent.
Unless they want to bond it a hundred percent, in which case, that's something we five need to talk about is, is that, that, that's. You know where that's gonna fall?
Well, it's.
It's gonna fall right on us.
Our roads, our budget, we would be, the district would be funding the bond and all of the process.
There's a cost to that.
There's a co- yes.
But if that is exclusively. A Stony Brook item, and my question saying that all those costs be assessed on the Stony Brook?
Yeah.
Yes, if, if this board so chose to, yes.
Yeah.
That would be your understanding of.
Well, there's no choice. It's not, it's not done by anybody else.
If, if Stony Brook would choose to fund this through the bond procedure, then they also fund all the expenses related to that.
So it, and this is where conversation comes in, one sec, this is where the conversation comes in around, you know, ownership. Di- di- uh, district owns the roads versus Stony Brook. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter, I mean, from a resident's perspective. Because whether we do the repairs or Stony Brook owns the roads and they do the repairs, still coming out of the residence. Now, there could be argument on whether, let's say if Stony Brook happened to own the roads, maybe there's some administrative costs. Or there might be some cost savings in other areas, but that's an assumption. But I think the residents, I assume they know. That they would be paying for repair regardless of, you know, where it says. How many, how many, um, residents do we, how many, do we have?
Seven hundred and seventy-eight.
So.
How much?
Seven hundred and seven.
Seven hundred and seventy-eight.
So just.
Seven seventy-seven.
Just so we're clear.
Believe me or not, she told me seven seventy-nine yesterday.
Somebody died.
So it would be, just if, if it was two million dollars for, uh, let's say in ten years, fifteen years, whenever the roads wanted to be down. So if we, if we did a bond of two million dollars, then if, if we're twenty years, it would be about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty bucks. For resident annually, just, uh, just magnitude of just what it, as opposed to, we did it this way, it would be.
Four, four hundred and fifty a year or something.
Yeah, it would be.
Well, you gotta do the incremental increase.
Yeah, I, I was just trying to say the order of magnitude. Do you wanna, do you want your assessment to go up in ten or fifteen years, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty bucks?
It'd be a hundred and ninety-two.
Tony has a. My, my, my stuff, it was two hundred, two hundred. So it's closer to hers. But Tony, go ahead.
My only, my only thought is, re- remember that any borrowing with maturity more than five years has to go through the validation.
Which gets expensive. Thousand dollars in fees.
Yes.
Yeah, so you're probably looking at two point five.
So then you're looking at forty dollars of household savings based on your number and based on the two hundred number, fifty bucks, forty, fifty bucks savings each year.
Do you guys, mine, if Warren has a comment? I don't mind.
Warren, you wanna come up? Just, just so that.
You're important. We need to hear your voice.
I'm not speaking on behalf of, of the board, but the discussion, uh, in the last week or so has been if we own the roads. Then we have to buy all, have to pay for all the, uh, bill, rebuilding and stuff on the roadways. If the ownership stays with, uh, Gateway, then there's a possibility of an SRF loan. Which would be, is what they have been looking at doing for a long time of the people.
You, you can't get an SRF loan for.
Okay, see that, that, that's one of the things they don't know. They were talking about.
And that's a good point is, is there any funding options available to the district that may not be available to, to an HOA?
Yeah, that would be.
Our HOA's got, it's a bond issue. You just go out and do a loan, bank loan.
Well, that's, you know, we're living alone where I'm at too, in the villas for the roofs here down before long, so we know what the costs are.
You can't use SRF for roads, is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry.
You can't use SRF for.
No.
Oh, water.
The one advantage of borrowing with the governmental body, there are no documentary stamp taxes. I mean, so there's a savings there. Any note or, or loan that you take out from a bank or any other lending institution, you pay documentary stamp taxes, neck and add up. Mortgage, but I mean, so it, it, this, it's just one of those items.
So there would be minimal, minimal advantages to funding from a district entity versus the, your HOA.
That's, that's kind of what a lot of people have been saying, but then there's just enough people around saying, no, we can get the SRF funding and be a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
And some people say, no, you can't do that. And I, I think that this confirms that.
Yeah, that's, I'm glad you brought that up because that's important.
And then even, uh, trying to get across to some of the people too, that whether Gateway owns them. Or Stony Brook HOA owns them, Stony Brook residents are gonna pay for.
Still pay for it.
Don't make a difference.
Don't make any difference.
Well, and, and to expand on that, just like we just did with the bonds for Gateway and for Pelican. Pelican paid their fees, their portion, their fair share. So if we did this for Stony Brook, Stony Brook would be paying their stuff. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the rest of Gateway paying.
It's the administrative costs.
Yes.
What they call. Associated with bond.
The beneficial party should pay, be covered with the costs.
They, they pay the percentage that they benefit from it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I wasn't clear on what you want us to do with this. Do you want us to treat it like the other three that we've talked about and just do on the year it's, we anticipated spending?
So we, I would do it, that's the only way to highlight as an accurate.
I would say yes.
I, I, I mean. I would probably think yes, that you would.
You got the study that the capital reserves guy did that for Stony Brook is much simpler. It'd be easy to take and just almost copy it. And take his projections. And then you can argue, do you think the paving's gonna be in thirty-one or thirty or twenty-nine or thirty-two?
The, the one thing they're doing right now is getting, uh, estimates, proposals to rejuvenate the other roads besides Pebblebrook. They did Pebblebrook last year, the rejuvenation stuff on it, and now they're getting proposals to do the side roads. To extend the life of the road before they would have to do anything else. And they, they kinda guarantee about a five-year limit.
I'm not familiar with the rejuvenation.
It, it, it sort of goes down and it doesn't fix the.
Totally understand.
What I, what I think is, I think the conversation that should be coming from Stony Brook is. Uh, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna fi- uh, if we're gonna fund at point in time. I don't, I don't believe ten thousand is an adequate number regardless. You know, I would say it should be a minimum of, I don't know, maybe. Fifty to seventy-five, but at, at a absolute minimal. So that, were you gonna kick back that, kick back that to Chris to see if they're adjusting their reserve?
I will.
So that's what I was.
We'll send the email.
Well, you gotta get, to, to make it right, you gotta first take this and put it in the years you're gonna spend it, then go back to see what you need to make it happen. I think the number's gonna be around a hundred and fifty thousand.
But we're, we'll send the email and we'll, we'll ask if they have any amendments. By a time and date certain, hopefully by Thursday's meeting. And if they don't provide anything, we're gonna continue.
We'll do it on, on, on.
Yes, of course, of course.
I just don't think there's a, there's, there's a consensus on approach.
Okay.
Either way.
It's gonna be up to us.
This is your budget. So you, you take the input from Stony Brook, from Pelican, from Parks and Rec, from all of your advisory committees, is your budget. From us, you take recommendations from us, so.
Right. Town Lake Center, Town Lake is not here?
No, there's no capital.
Like a three thousand dollar budget a year.
There's no capital for that.
The, the road is not?
No.
No, there's a little bit in there for the road.
Yeah, cause, cause I'm.
We don't own.
Yeah, could.
No.
We did, because I know we did striping on it before.
But the budget for, for Town Lake.
We did, now, do I know? Yes.
It's a very, very small.
Okay. Don't think we own that road, but that's okay.
The biggest expense is the.
I think that road belongs to Town Lakes homeowners association, lot owners association.
Alright, uh. Do, do you wanna go over staffing? Staffing's gonna, is that on Thursday's budget?
We have.
This, we already looked at the bottom sheet and then all that's left is staffing. I already made green things today.
The only, only thing I saw on the staff is I didn't understand this first page, what that meant. I didn't get that at all. What's market, proposed market? What does that mean?
That's a Chelseaism. I was playing with that.
Chelsea took the sheet that I got in Chelsea.
Chelsea, Chelsea did up.
Okay, this is the, this one's the correct.
What we got. Uh, what she did here, this is, um, proposed with, uh, if we would take everybody based on the work that, uh, Chelsea got. And due to her paychecks and some numbers from Doug and doing comps, if we were to do a market adjustment for everyone's salaries. And also, this also includes like any current positions we have that are vacant as well as ones that are either already approved by the board. Or we would like to add for fiscal twenty-four. Those are the ones vacant are, are orange and anything new is in yellow. So these annual salaries would be, uh, what Chelsea will change after Thursday, but, uh, this would be. This is, yeah, it's gonna go down. No, these are, these, these salaries would be for, um, these positions if we were to have to go out and hire these people. So this will bring them up, do a market adjustment for them. So that's, this one right here.
Generally.
Column F.
Column F, yes.
So, we did, I did a bunch of comps. And I think I've talked to one or two of you. We're pretty close on the sa- on our salaried employees. Our hourly employees. Are way off, extremely off. Um, and so.
Why can't we just see a column with, with you, we've got and what we're, what's proposed?
I can drop that in there because it's actually, it's on the sheet. I can drop it in.
The percentage increase. And I will tell you. Uh, when you, when is the proposed, uh, implementation of this?
It would be October first.
Uh, October, okay.
What, what, column Q, I got a question on, uh, I, I don't do that at all. You got seven hundred and seventy-seven, you guys got what, twenty-five hundred? So I could see that being two percent or three percent, but zero?
Who are we talking?
Column Q.
Percentage, percentage of what they should pay for.
There's no time allocated by our district manager for doing Stony Brook. No, 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 that's app, everybody does that. That's apples and oranges. If you're gonna do that, put Gateway Greens in here and I'll have you do some of my admin work.
What I would like to see.
That's not fair.
Is a bracket of any change, positive or negative over next year.
All right, the percentage, the percentages or the?
Percentages.
But my point was getting back is, we are seeing salaries move about, uh, quarterly. So if we.
Just send it to me, tell me.
Can mark it up on.
Mark it up.
What was the number?
Can Doug finish his sentence?
Yeah, so really quick.
Please.
What we're.
Assume what he might say.
Well, what we're seeing is compensation's moving about every three months. Up until.
Moving upward?
Well, it's moving. So, uh, up until end of last year, beginning of this year, we're seeing downward trends. The previous twenty-four months, it was upwards. It peaked out about thirty percent on average across almost all industries. Um, some specific, in some specific industries, um, it, it was a little bit more variance, but. We're seeing things in the last three to four, let's see, we're in month five now. So the last five months, we've seen downward trends in the majority. Of, of areas and it's starting to flatten out. So what my point of telling you this is. If we're looking at an implementation of October, we should probably revisit. Uh, we can budget the amount, but before we actually execute an implementation, adapt, we should revisit. Um, just prior to, because it, it is starting to level off, uh, actually it's dropped and I think it's starting to level off, but. I wouldn't want to approve a market adjustment today where in three, three, four, five months. It may, may not be there. So we just wanna be thoughtful about that.
So if it's starting to drop, then that would make sense to approve it now.
You know, our employees will see this as well as the public. They see that they might be getting a, a raise. They're gonna go, ah, and then in October, you don't give them that amount of raise because.
The, the purpose of this exercise is do, is doing, uh, a market analysis based on snapshotting time. So we're going based on what, what we looked at today and we also looked at the conditions over the past, I looked at it over the conditions over the past twelve months.
Okay.
So. We look at it based on today in order to be, um, uh, uh, in order to make a market adjustment. If we, if we did it based on today's rates, this is what the estimate would be. We won't do it based on today because we have to approve the budget. And so therefore, it won't be implemented for a couple of months down the road. So we will, I mean, we'll say it on the record. This is a, this creates a baseline and we will reassess at the time of, of when the, the adjustment would take place. And there could be some variance plus or minus. We might see that there's some variance goes in the other direction, right? So.
Okay, Carol, this is a.
So what you're saying is that, that, uh, the total amount of the increase, the one sixty-four, eight forty at the end of.
Yeah.
And you're saying, you just put that in a line item.
We, yeah.
And not, not distribute anything, but put it in a separate line item and then this would be. Where any increases starting October first would come from.
Yeah, because we have to just budget that amount. So we're gonna say there's a, a hundred and fifty or maybe we, we, maybe we say a hundred and fifty or maybe we say two hundred.
Sure.
But we budget that amount and it's at, uh, really Chelsea's discretion to.
Would you do?
You allocate appropriately based on what the conditions are.
Change it from percent to numbers?
I fixed that on another one.
That would be based, that is the numbers based on. This. I'm a manager too.
It's a staffing and plan.
Based on, so Laura in her fancy Excel sheets, based on the.
So what, what this does, what, Stephanie?
Just applies.
Are you Stephanie?
Yes.
Stephen, question.
That's my type.
Well, I, again, I just, I don't agree with that. If we're gonna take and we're gonna have those, uh, administrative fees and public works fees. That are applicable, they should be prorated. The only way I know of doing it is doing it based on population. Senate population.
We've, well, we've never done it, percent of population, we've done it by the amount of work that we do in the community.
No difference between Pelican Reserve and Stony Brook on the assets of, of, of public assets we own. There's exactly the same, roads, streetlights, street signs, landscaping, paving. So, the, a pro ratio, pro ra- pro rate of share based on population would be totally applicable as far as I'm concerned.
Never done it that way, it's always.
But the last two years, it's been ten, five, five or ten, eight, five, and so we've taken it to zero. That's, that's, that just, I don't buy that.
Keep in mind, we've also actually implemented the O and M agreement.
So we don't have Stony Brook Advisory Committee anymore, so it's, there's a lot less of staff's time that's involved in Stony Brook.
You said, you said, you said the magic word, lot less time, there is time.
Maybe a half an hour a month. I can't really justify charging them five percent of my time for a half an hour.
Wow, yeah, that was rude.
Fifteen percent that I gave you is generous. It's a lot more.
I just wanna see what they were last year, uh, across all the columns.
So again, these are our estimates. If you want to change it, you are more than welcome to. This is your budget.
Thank you.
This is based on, this is based on, um, we tracked staff's time, like where are they spending their time? On what, on what tasks and especially like for Pelican and those specific communities, but as far as like under the admin landscape waterway. Those things are all based on actual staff time spent in those areas, which is why that's allocated that way.
I've been trying to see this for quite a while since. Got it and see what we work.
Right, with three whole punches, write it up with red.
Not only I, but you know, everybody that's changed.
I'll do the whole sheet.
Are you having questions? So let's just, let's go through the staffing real quick, just, cause I wanna just talk to you about a couple of the positions that. Of course, we have the project manager we're trying to fill. Public Works Inspector One is the intern that used to be with L. Um, we converted that to an intern to this kind of part-time inspector. Kind of, um, succession planning. We will have a succession planning document for you all, um, probably in the June.
I can pass it on here, so it's.
And at, at your June, one of your June meetings. So this Public Works Facility Supervisor. We have Andrew, who is our new Public Works Director. Uh, he would like to take, um, some of the facilities away. Um, from, from Parks and Rec and have them focus more like program. Programming and, and activities and things like that.
And less maintenance.
And less maintenance and have a facility supervisor, um, who would have subordinates of, of the maintenance worker.
Okay, say that. So, so you're just moving.
Run that again.
Well, we're moving the maintenance, the maintenance workers, two of the maintenance workers.
So Rick and Angela are moving from Parks and Rec's maintenance.
It, it may not be those two.
So you have Rick and Angelo moving from Parks and Recs to Public Works Operations. And it may not be them, I get it, but.
Yeah, but, and some of their time is split.
Yeah, that's how you do it on the grid up there.
So and then they, they would report to a facility supervisor who would, who would oversee all district facilities. So if AC goes out here, they would handle that AC replacement.
Over in the pavilion.
Yeah.
Or at the pool, the trailer, anywhere, wherever.
I don't understand.
So, so Andrew would be over all of them?
Public Works, yes.
Is what you're saying?
Yes.
Explain to me, we've got Parks and Rec Manager, Parks and Rec's Landscape, Sports Field Maintenance. Is this, but that's also regular landscaping, right?
It would be, it would be intending on taking the maintenance of these sports fields, uh, like the mowing.
That's why.
Yeah, that's sports field maintenance, but for the other Parks and Rec position, that's Parks and Recs and landscaping, correct?
No, he, I don't know why that title.
Twenty-five is eighty-five percent landscape.
He is the, he is the landscape lead. That is Jim's title.
He's eighty-five percent budgeted to landscape, under general fund.
And so Tim has no landscape responsibility.
Other than working with.
The sports, yeah, so it's Tim's responsibility, he's, he's Parks and Rec, both programs, facilities. Um, yeah, programs and facilities.
Tim, Tim would not have facilities. As proposed. So be, Tim's would just, I mean, Andrew.
He would be Park and Rec, Parks and Rec. Yeah, right now, uh, Jim does not report to Tim, Jim will report to Andrew.
Pool is a facility. The field is a facility. The concession stand, the playgrounds, that, those are all Parks and Rec facilities. But is that not, is that, is that one of those kind of dotted line, like you're responsible for the entity, but not responsible for the, the actual structure?
You need to adjust it, I think, in what you're proposing, then you need an adjustment on the title of the employee is.
But this would be more like leader.
Well, yeah, because if he's not over, like Doug's point, he's not overseeing all aspects of what encompass. Then there's a change of title that needs to be taken place.
Would be like a program manager?
Program, yeah, that's what I was, yeah.
We, we will review, we'll review that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the, the, the key is to make sure that the percentages fall correctly, not necessarily what the title is.
It's more about the, the salaries, making sure the salaries are aligned and that the percentage allocations are correct.
Can you go up a little bit?
Down or up?
There you go, yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, the only thing that my position is. We should almost always be hiring, um, I think for every. Three, three people we hire, we're, we probably retain one, just due to the nature and environment.
Utilities is pretty much every two we hire, we keep one.
Yeah. Well, and, and I'm gonna throw something.
Can you go up a little?
Go, yeah, go back over, you lost me on planes.
Yeah, oh, saying, yeah, go up and then to the side, I wanted to see some.
Yeah, there you go. Bill is now the Utilities Director?
I am, posing interim. I'll run for six months. Have questions, please. So.
I take it we're having issues of not finding a Utilities Director? And the reason is?
I guess that's what she meant to, you can talk to her.
Well, I have the same type of question, so I don't wanna have a one-on-one.
Well, what I'm trying to figure out is, is it, is it a budgetary deal that nobody will do the job for the price? Solve that problem. I'm sorry.
Qualified candidates.
Qualified candidate.
That's it, with another candidate.
So would you adjust, did you say up and you mean that? Would you adjust the title then, if it's interim?
This, yeah.
Just for, just for now, so then we don't have a shock, like this person just moved.
Where, where is that person right, where is that person right now? Utilities Director.
Uh, you would.
No, 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 that's only me. Where's the, what is the salary, the present position?
I wouldn't even call it interim. Hey, can we do something? I, I'm not a big fan of, of using the term interim for a, for an employee that is permanent. Let's just call it something else. Let's just call it Utility Supervisor or Utility Something. You know, it's a step before director role. Assistant Director or something like that. Yeah, well, it doesn't matter because, you know, an interim means that they're, you know, I, I just don't, I'm not a big fan of using.
My, my deal is, is what is, what is the increase that was, what was the increase that was enjoyed by this move? I understand the position, I know the guy very well, but Utility Director. So he's going from thirty-eight, thirty-one to.
That's the hourly, right?
To, where's the deal? Fifty-one, Jesus Christ. Twenty percent, yeah, but it's not, it doesn't, that doesn't mean that you have the, you don't have that, uh. Oh, uh, experience and level to be, to justify that.
Might wanna have more frequent incremental increase.
But, I mean, it is a total different position. I mean, we're going from, he's, he's our electrician. I will tell you this, I, I, he is everything I've heard about, like I see him, I see him in Austin.
Well, there's no doubt in my mind, he's very good, I just, the, the, the title.
So he, the way I look at it is, when you do a promotion like that, you give an incremental promotion for the individual. Because they're stepping into a new role, it's gonna have more, uh, more responsibility. However. It's not like you're hiring someone externally that brings that expertise certifications to the table that would warrant the, the position as it is. So I think we meet, meet somewhere in the middle. I think we give an incremental increase because of the expanded responsibility. But then also set thresholds where if he gets his certifications, if he gets, you know, whatever time and role, there's gonna be incremental. I, I would do a review every six months.
Talk about this outside of this room, but that's okay. I want, that's why he, and he was, he agreed to the interim title. Because it's not only him. The, um, he has to come in front of you all, that, that's an expectation of the position. And he was okay with doing that for six months and that's why I wanted to give him that opportunity. He came and he, he, he showed interest. So, and, and, and between him and Austin and Isip. The, since we, since Kenny's been gone, they have stepped up tremendously.
That's great.
And, and I, I want to give him this position, this, this opportunity. And in six months, he may come to me and say, Chelsea, this is not for me, and, and, and I'll be okay with that.
Well, that's where I think the position is, it's either supervisor or it's assistant. After six months, if he does fantastic, he grows in role, he gets the certifications, then we promote him to, to the manager spot. If in six months he goes, you know what, I, I'm, I'm still have a lot more to learn, but we can't wait for another six months, we bring somebody in as the manager. And then he still stays the assistant, so he doesn't get demoted, he doesn't, you know, he stays in a promoted role, but he has to grow into that, to that manager.
So how, how does this work then? How, how, how does this work? Utilities Manager?
It's usually it's Director, so the Director would be the top position, but if you put him as manager and then Austin and Zia. You'd still have a Director above, and for some reason doesn't work.
His role as assistant, that's, that's, that's future state, that's not what his current role is.
Correct, he's the GIS.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me. I would, manager will stay vacant. I'm sorry, director will stay vacant, manager and then.
Okay, so we need to add.
Utility manager or utility specialist, wh- whatever that is.
So, so this. Thinking, so succession planning, Bill, I don't intend on keeping that electrician title. And I know he's had multiple titles since he's been here. He has handled all of our lift stations. And any small minor electrical repairs. Doing those salary comps, that position is typically a maintenance tech, and that's where I wanna change that to this utilities maintenance tech. It, it, it pays a little bit more, cause it has more responsibilities than your typical ma- utilities operator. And, and, and then, of course, we, we have the need for an additional meter specialist.
I'm gonna tell you what you're gonna find and what we're running into, and this is nothing new, cause we, it's been this way. I, actually, your role ended up in, uh, in this way, where we found someone that had a specialist in a particular area, also broader experience. And, and you fit the role. And what we're gonna have to look for is, we're not gonna find the one individual that's got, uh, experience in four. You know, in, in four or five areas, like our ideal candidate's not there.
Yeah.
What we are gonna find is probably more specialists in siloed areas. So we, we're, we need a leader. And then we need individuals, and this is my opinion, we need specialists in certain areas, so instead of having, you know. One utility manager and then go under them and, and like a, a, a second or third level. We're gonna probably have to build out more, so manager, you might have, you might have, uh, I'm sorry, director, you might have multiple managers. With specializations in certain areas, in order to get what we need to get, or else we're gonna have gaps.
That's how, three other utility, uh, that I, that when doing these comps. They didn't have one maintenance person doing irrigation, water and sewer.
Right.
They had this, those siloed.
And I found the same thing, we talked about it.
Yeah, so.
Who's gonna do the electrical work?
The Utilities Maintenance Tech.
So we're gonna hire somebody to replace what Bill was doing?
He, he would be training them, yes. But if it's, if it's true electrical work that would need to be done, we would contract that out to Bentley. So minor, minor electrical repairs.
What, what percentage of Bill's time is currently electrical? It's a hundred percent of it.
Um, no, he.
Doing a lot of project work.
And sewer, sewer.
Like what? Electrical project work?
No.
Like what?
Um, we had one of the wells, pumps in the well go out, so I mean, that is partially electrical, but he's, he's co- coordinating the contractor. Coordinating with the contractor to replace that. We're doing the, the meter replacement back here, he's, he's working with Austin. Um, together to do that project. Around, very involved.
What's your, what's your, what were you getting at then?
Well, I, I was wondering whether or not we had a justification. Well, and that's. We don't have a justification, I sure, I don't understand why we have another position.
Is that why you wanna call it a maintenance tech? It's not, yeah, okay, so that makes sense.
Okay, as the electrician was breaking that we banked today.
Eighty, thirty-nine thousand.
Thirty-nine, something.
Thirty-eight, thirty-one, and you'll see how the maintenance tech dropped about ten dollars an hour.
This is current.
Yeah, and then you go.
Maintenance tech, I, I just.
And it's.
I'd go along with Doug, is it, maybe make it a half and call it a different name, this is supposed to Utilities Director.
No.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll make it a manager position.
Oh, you did that, the market allocations.
Change again, so, oh, I did it on the wrong tab.
What are you saying, make it?
It'll, it'll be, it'll be Utilities Manager. Director will stay vacant.
And, and then you will have another one above that that stays vacant.
Yes, the, the director will stay vacant, it'll move to a manager and then we will have a assistant. Manager as.
And then maybe split the difference on that.
And then however many specialists it was.
Before we leave this one, from a comp role. We have an individual that is growing and taking on more responsibility, and he's gonna get a new title. You don't, I have never automatically seen that person jump to the minimum of that role, you. He is a current employee, he's still gonna be an employee when it's done, and he's assuming greater responsibilities. So you take him up in steps, maybe six months, six, ten percent immediately, which would be six dollars now, and then six months or a year now, another.
That's fair, because.
I agree.
This, this rate was based on the director rate, now I've gotta go back and look at the manager rate that we have. So it, it's not gonna be the.
But we have only rates except for hourly, when you're talking in salary, the range, there should be a range rather than a minimum number. And because we can hire somebody like an intern off the street and then you evolve them in, you don't know, they shoot them up to whatever that. There's a, a wide range and it gives people a chance to grow, and that's what it's supposed to, and promote them for when they're taking on more responsibility.
We have ranges for every single position.
Okay, I didn't see that.
The only thing that you need to do is on. Okay, you need to add now a blank space in there or a Utilities Director. Oh, oh, okay, you go ahead and do that, okay.
So. The, the, the meter specialist is another position, because we have so many AMI issues. That oftentimes, if there are AMI issues with the collectors or with the acers or whatever, Leslie has to pull field staff over to help with those.
What's AMI?
Uh, our automatic metering, meters, our, our advanced meters.
That's the thing that pushes the reads through us for billing.
And then, um.
So with, with that one specifically, would we view that as a short term until we get resolved our suit? And possibly going into a new?
Just taking, just taking forty-four, split half the difference.
Say that again.
Take it to forty-four, the fifty-one.
Talking about the meter specialist now.
The new, hey, I agree with you, because it's exactly how it comes out to, ten percent. But the meter reader, if, if we're doing that because of the problems we're having with, with borderline.
That is an issue.
And we, I know, but we expect that to go away. It might be a new position that we hope when we change and convert to the new one, we wouldn't need all that support. Is that fair? Before that changes?
Three, three years, if not more.
So to not populate that position for three plus.
We did eighteen hundred manual reads last month.
So it's valid for the next year?
No, I don't say it's not valid, I'm not saying that at all.
Yeah, but it's not, it may not be a long, long.
It's easy to add, it's extremely difficult to reduce.
So I wanna, I wanna be clear, because with that position, it would require a vehicle, and we have not accounted for that yet. So I just keep that in mind, I mean, we share vehicles as much as we can, I drive my own personal vehicle most of the time.
I drive my own.
So, and that's why part of the conversation earlier with Capital Reserve is requesting an SUV, we don't have, I mean, we have an F-150, which is L's, but we don't have a vehicle that can seat four people, unless I drive my own car. And so, just, these are, I want to be completely transparent with you all.
Everybody's got a car, why do they need four people?
If we go on a trip. If I come to Pelican.
It's fifty miles on over.
So then also, again, we have, we just got noticed the other day from, I think I told you at the last meeting, Ryan, he's leaving us, and so just looking, just to give you an example, if we were to exercise all of our valves and our hydrants as we are supposed to annually. It comes out to over, it would take over five hundred hours to do that, and that's just preventative maintenance on those two items, that's a quarter of an employee's year. So things that we've kind of kicked the can down the road on the utility side, we are really trying to amp up and maintain and exercise what we should have been done a long time, so that's why we're asking for an additional utility field operator.
These problems that we've got with that water utility ain't going away, they ain't going away.
Okay, can, so on the proposed staffing, so forty-four and forty-six. There, can I look at what their current pay is now?
For the utility field operators?
Thirty-five dollars from the place.
Yeah, I just wanted to see what they are now. Because we're bringing in new people with the same salary.
So, keep in mind, they start, back to Bob's point, they start.
Entry level.
They start entry, now, if they get their license level three, they get a dollar raise. If they get their license level two, they get a two dollar raise.
That's great, that's totally appropriate.
Yeah.
Can you go back to the other one? So one is getting a six dollar increase and one is getting a two dollar increase.
Well, the way that I always manage these, she flips her game.
But the way I want, I want to make sure is, we're not just bringing everybody equal. Does it make sense?
Unless they are.
Unless they are, or unless, you know. Everything, like, you know, reviews how they work, everything, because then you're looking at a, you want to give a six dollar, you know, we're fighting on a six dollars here, but then we're giving a six dollar down here. You're the same six dollars for the two thousand and eighty hours.
That's the same thing with Denise, again, I don't know these people.
The way we should be managing this, to be quite honest, is Chelsea should come to us and say, here's my payroll budget for next year. It's increased ten percent due to the net addition of two positions and for some market adjustments. We say ten percent is acceptable, fine, we approve it, you figure out what you pay your people.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's.
I really do have no interest in looking at hourly rates, because I have no idea what some of these roles are, whatever, it's your responsibility to manage your budget, if people leave because we're not paying them appropriately, then that's fine. If you're not paying bonuses or giving people incentives, that's your problem until it becomes our problem. But for us to go through all these.
We all have a policy, Doug, I totally agree with everything you said, but nobody should get more than ten percent change.
I don't think it's fair, you're essentially punishing existing staff, if you have someone on staff, who, I'm not saying in this case, this is, but it does come up, or you have someone who is qualified to do a higher position and you penalize them because they already work here, when we could bring someone in from the outside and pay them with the same skill set, more money than we have an existing employee, I take exception to that.
Well, I don't disagree with what you said, but here's the difference, if you have an employee, and they increase their skill level, or whatever, become more valuable, then you recognize that, but you, but within a year, they shouldn't be greater than ten percent, no matter what happens.
I think what Bob's trying to say is, if if someone is jumping from one role to the next, and it is warranting a ten or twenty percent increase in pay, then we may not have been promoting them appropriately throughout the whole life cycle, so we're stalling people in roles, and then pushing them through to positions because of because of essential urgency, not because of actual progression in role.
Again, we go back to Carol's original comment, just, this is the high watermark, this is not necessarily their guarantee to make fifty-one dollars an hour.
Proposed, this is not saying this is what they're gonna get.
But my point, like, I want to make sure this is very clear. If you get promoted into a role, and it warrants a twenty percent increase, then to me, that's a gap on our point, that we have not progressed you through in your existing role. Because on average, it's about six to ten percent for progressions in most environments, and you should be promoted about every, probably two years is what they're saying in today's world. But if you're a millennial, it's like every six months, but that's a whole nother conversation.
Historically, this is.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we're behind, and it's, we're seeing that. So let's start promoting that, so we.
But I like the salary pool, where we take the payroll of the group, and that's the money that you distribute as you think is appropriate with the group.
And then you get to pick.
Yeah, you get to pick.
And I struggled with, I agree, I struggled with this when I worked at the beach, because at a Director level, I busted my tail but I was still getting the same dollars as the next person, the person who showed up less than forty hours a week, so, and that's where I appreciate that sentiment of allowing Laura and I to make those decisions. These, we are, and I knew that coming in, Kenny preached that to me before he left. I have, I know somebody who just started a job at US Water that makes twenty-six dollars an hour, and he does potable, that's it.
Yeah.
He doesn't do sewer, he does new irrigation, so.
Well, and also the environment over the last couple of years changed too, I mean, we've seen a twenty, like I said, twenty, thirty percent increase in salaries across the board, now that's starting to come down. But if we bring someone in today, we would pay more than what we would a year ago.
Right.
That's, that happens.
But that happens, right, so I think, you give us a number, we approve it. You figure it out.
If you have someone who is, that you constantly have to motivate to do something, I wouldn't expect them to be getting a raise.
Amen. So that was my point, not saying, that's why I didn't, I mentioned numbers, is because we're gonna bring in a new person, and I just, I wanted to let you play with those numbers and not, let's just take the rule and bring it everywhere.
I understand hot water market, makes it a little more valid.
So Chelsea, Laura, do you have everything you need now to put together the budget?
We have.
It's a loaded one.
No, I mean, do you need more decisions from us today?
We will. We will, we will.
You put it together and we see it.
We are clear with CIP, we are clear with your staff and direction, so we will.
You'll see the operations on Thursday.
The fee schedule is going to June first to that public camp, so that'll check off the mark on our budget. And Laura just wrapped up the budget today, we did push out what's in your packet, it's an eighty percent draft.
Eighty-five percent operations budget.
So.
We got all this. You said it now.
You have this staffing plan, yes, I finished up the operations budget, like, one o'clock.
Sitting high water, right?
Yes.
That's correct.
How are we gonna get this to?
June fifteenth.
How are we gonna get this to? How are we gonna get this to Russ Wire to crunch all these numbers to get?
Get this to Steve and we get it to him, and he can turn it on about a day.
He runs it, Russ or Stephen? I thought it was Russ.
Russ does, but I just send it to them and it takes them about a day usually.
Can you make sure he's not playing a hockey tournament?
I will.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, we're talking about a lot of stuff getting that he's got a crunch.
It's not, these are all the same numbers that we send them every year, so. So you have a lot of advice, and then the committee is gonna come and add all of that stuff, right?
So, on your Thursday's budget, we have typed up their PRAK priorities list with dollar counts. We did ask PPAK Chair and the PRAK Chair to come and give an update. If they come, they come, if they don't, they don't, but you do have the PRAK priorities. And again, this is your budget, tell us what you want, take off what you want.
And nothing from residents, so if from now on you get anything, then you just let us know, like this came from.
If it comes through customer care or a conversation.
Randy said we did get one comment, somebody mentioned something about pickleball courts.
Okay.
That was it, one comment. So then you let that know.
Yeah, okay, so one more thing, if you don't mind, so in, in the world in which we exist, which we're a small gateway services, a small utility municipality thingy. Whatever it is, what is generally assumed to be the amount of, not the amount of money, the percentage of money that you need to have in reserves for daily operations? I mean, is it?
Daily operations.
Two months, three months?
Yeah, two months.
Two months.
It's three months worth of stuff, yeah, it's not a percent.
Okay.
Three months worth of operating.
Including or excluding capital.
Which would include paying back debts, because that's included in our operations budget, so, and payroll, not including capital.
Includes salaries.
Correct, it's payroll, stuff to keep the lights on, so, all that important stuff.
Three months of operations.
I don't know yet.
Gave us that number.
I'll get it.
Stephen's given us that number.
No, you recall, and the primary reason for it is because of the tax bills go out, and people may not take advantage of it.
It depends on what time of year, I think, I thought it was like.
Laura, with her new accounting software, we'll have you that number by Thursday, it's about three months' worth of operating, our, whatever our typical operating expenses are for over a three-month period. So we will have that for you on Thursday, one of the biggest things you will see Thursday is an emergency funding line item for each each fund, for each fund, so that is gonna be the biggest, one of the biggest differences.
Jera funds, Tony Brad, Pelican, and the Enterprise.
Emergency fund?
Yeah.
Well, it's a line item.
Which would not be.
But not calling a hurricane.
Yeah, it's just emergencies, we could use it for anything.
Like, how do you back into that?
We didn't, we just kind of randomly chose something.
I think it should be, look at your total operating expenses and take a percent.
We kind of looked at what we spent for Ian and based it on that, so.
What were you saying?
Nothing, if you're done.
Yeah.
One other thing, and it's not a motion, but I'd like the board to consider instructing staff to pay us for this meeting. Recognizing that we're not gonna change the cap at the end of the year, we may be working for enough in November and October. But I think it'd be appropriate to pay us for this meeting. It's up to the board, the statute caps the number of time. I understand, I'm comfortable with that all the way.
So you'd much rather get paid now than.
Yeah.
I don't care.
This isn't to me.
You can't vote, but you can give directions.
Right. For every conversation. You're, if no one else cares, then I guess I'm the only one that cares, so I direct.
We cap less, you guys pretty much cap every year, yeah, because you get it, you can't go over more than, it's forty-eight hundred dollars, so.
Twenty-four meetings.
Two meetings a month for twelve months.
Unless you have a referendum and the voters approve an increase.
There you go.
All right, anything else?
We'll see five people.
Do you have those copies? Did you make your copy?
Unmute it us.